The first order of business today is the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda, Madam Chair.
I moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any further discussion? You know, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. This is kind of quick. This next one is not a public hearing, so I think we can, well, Kim comes in. Okay, all right, so we've got a couple of minutes. And we will do Cedar Mountain Ranch. Uh-oh, you're all by yourself?
Pardon me?
You're all by yourself today?
Jenny's on the phone. Oh, I think when she's done, she will.
She'll join you?
She'll be over, is my guess.
We were a little worried it was by himself.
Yes, I know.
All right.
Yeah, it's not.
It's all good. It's all good.
It's not a public hearing, so we decided we could go ahead and get started. This would be Kim Delvin with Park County Planning and Zoning. Jenny, amended plot of Cedar Mountain Ranch.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a partial vacation and amended plan. And it's Cedar Mountain Ranch, as you said, Madam Chair. It's Lot 5 in Block 1 and the west one half of Lot 6 in Block 1. This property is in the GR5 zoning district. The planning area is the Lower South Fork. The applicant is Stephen Potter. And what we've asked, and what the applicant asks, is that you approve this partial vacation amended plan. And what it will do, it'll vacate currently Lot 5, which is 10.1 acres, and vacate the west one half of Lot 6, which is 5 acres, and will create, in place of Lot 5, it will create Lot 105, which will be 4.82 acres, and it will create Lot 106, which I had him, there's a mistake in the staff report. Instead of it being 5.18 acres, it should be 5.28 acres. So those will be the two, the two things created. And you can see in Figure 1, you see a, a copy of this amended plan. That hashed area is essentially the property that's, that's going to move from Lot 5 into the west half of Lot 6, creating then Lot 105 and Lot 106. History, this, this subdivision was approved by the Park County Board of County Commissioners in 1966. Created six lots in Block 1, nine lots in Block 2. Block 1 is on the east, Block 2 is on the west. There, there have been several lot line adjustments since that original approval. The Lot 5 currently is owned solely by Mr. Potter. The west one half of Lot 6 currently is owned by Mr. Potter and Claire Potter. Location, you see in Figure 2. The location is, it's located just west of Highway 291. It's north of County Road 6SU, which is also known as Bartlett Lane. Mountain View Drive is in the center of this subdivision, separating the two blocks. And it's about six miles southwest of Cody, this property. And Madam Chair, this is, I said, a partial vacation, and it will be an amended plan. So this has permitted the, the partial vacation and amended plan for changing the lot configuration. An amended plan is required. Of course, an amended plan needs to be approved by the board. And it can be approved by the board without a public hearing, should we feel that, that there's no chance of, or little chance of any lot owners, their interest being compromised. We think that there shouldn't be any neighboring lot owners that are compromised by this, because essentially the Potter's own both, both of these. It's a property swap in a way. The required fee in the draft amended plan were provided to us on June 14th of this year. Again, our planning director, Joy, determined no public hearing is necessary because of conditions. Therefore, there was no public hearing notice. I mentioned this is in the GR5 zoning district. This will be lot size averaging, because one lot will turn out to be less than 5 acres, and one lot will be greater than 5 acres. However, it is allowed using lot size averaging. In terms of neighboring land use, you can see in Figure 3 that this property is essentially surrounded by residential. They're believed, I think, to, slightly to the west, I believe that's, that's exempt property. And there are some ag uses to the south and southeast. In terms of site characteristics, then Figure 3 also shows the, the border of these current two lots. There are essentially buildings there, residents and a number of outbuildings. And in Figure 4, Madam Chair, you can see a topo map, and really, there's a little change in elevation. This property is fairly flat. Neither of these lots have any portion in any overlay district. We've not received any public comments. The Platte Review Committee looked at this amended plan on June 28th. There were just some minor corrections and changes that needed to be completed. And then we got, the next day, we got the revised amended plan. We have on, starting on, on top page 7, we have the amended plan process talks about the fees. Again, a public hearing is not necessary. On this amended plan, there's a place for the lot owners to sign and a place dedicating these new lots. The plan is titled Cedar Mountain Ranch, Lot 5 and West Half of Lot 6. Again, I talked about what the new lots will be. Madam Chair, we have some findings that you had a chance to read. We have a recommendation. We recommend approving this. Then we have two conditions. Should you approve it? We have two conditions that we're recommending. And we are happy to answer questions that you might have.
Questions for the Commissioners? Since it's not a public hearing, any other comments? I guess, owners? Okay.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Been moved and seconded to approve as presented, with conditions?
With conditions as recommended by Chair.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Colleen.
Go ahead. Our next thing is at 10 o'clock, so we'll have a few minute break. It is a public hearing, so we have to wait.
Okay.
Next thing on our agenda this morning is a public hearing to consider appeals of the Park County Planning and Zoning Director's decision on a light trespass complaint. So first we'll hear from Kim Dilven, Jenny from the Planning and Zoning Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, if I may, I would just like to summarize events that have transpired essentially over the, over the past year. And I'll try to do it in about five minutes. So in April of 2021, we received emails from Mr. Barton, a neighbor to the Reeds regarding light trespass. Saying that this light was an issue, it was a nuisance. There were also visits to our office and there were photos shared with us from Mr. Barton. And there were, there were several emails back and forth between us and Mr. Barton. Then in May of last year, we heard from Mr. Barton that the light, the lights had been extinguished. So that was, that was the end of the problem at that time. Then in February of this year, we received a letter of complaint from Mr. Barton with evidence, again with photos. And a letter of complaint from Mr. Reeves, another neighbor to the Reeds, again with evidence, talking about the light trespass and it being a nuisance. Asking us to, you know, to do what we could to have that extinguished. On March of this year, we sent a notice of potential violation to the Reeds, essentially laying out what our regs say about lighting. And asking, you know, whether or not they believe they're in compliance, or if not, can they come into compliance? I did after that, in March of this year, I received a call from Mr. Reed, talking about essentially how he doesn't believe that his lights are, are violating our regs. He said he didn't plan to have them extinguished. And provided some more detail about what he thought was, was not really light trespass. At the time, or shortly thereafter, I set an inspection date. So on March 25th of this year, I went out and I visited with the Reeds. And inspected the property, I took photos, those were in our packet. I took photos essentially of a light that is on the front of a shop, on the east side of a shop. Mr. Reach Properties to the north. I took photos of a light on the back of the Reed's house, which is on the west side of their house. Mr. Barton's residence is further to the west. The, the light on the front of the garage is, is shielded, it's screened, it is down-directed. Consistent with our regs. The light on the back of their house to the west is not down-directed and it's not shielded. Took photos, shared those with you. On April 19th, and before that date, Jenny and myself had set up an appointment to go out and basically do some research, go out and inspect, see the lights at night. Before that, Jenny had done some research to and determined how to operate a current light meter that we had. She did some testing of that light meter to determine whether or not it perhaps is accurate. So on April 19th, Jenny and I left the parking lot here about 8:30. We got to the Reed's property about nine o'clock. And with our light meter, we took a reading at the property line between the Reeds and the Reeds. And we received the highest amount of foot candles we recorded was 0.17 foot candles. We originally had the light meter laying flat, horizontal. And then we tilted it up slowly vertical and the highest reading we could get was 0.17 foot candles at the property line. Between the light and essentially to the Reed's property. At 9:30, we went to, to the Barton's property, talked to Mr. Barton, we also, before we talked to Mr. Reeves. And straight west of the light at the back of the Reed's house. At the property line on Mr. Martin's property, again, we took a light meter reading. And the only reading we could ever, well, the only number we ever got to record was a zero. On May 19th, Joy, our planning director, sent a letter to Mr. Barton and Mr. Reeves, essentially saying that there was no violation, there was no light trespass. Later in May, we did, we, our office, Jenny and I, Joy, received a new light meter, which was pre-calibrated. We did just a little bit of research in the kitchen when it was dark with a flashlight, basically had in our lab, had these two meters at the same distance from this light. One was a new meter, it's pre-calibrated, the other meter was the one we used for our field work. Those meters had identical readings. So our conclusion was, the light meter we took out and we did our field research with. Our conclusion was that it, it was recording accurately. Again, our conclusion is that the, the light in front of the shop, it is down-directed, it is screened, it is shielded. At the property line, there is less than half a foot candle of light trespass. The light in the back of the house, the Reed's house shining to the Barton property, it is not down-directed, it is not shielded. However, we received a reading of zero, our conclusion is there's no light trespass. We're happy to answer your questions if you might have. And did I, did you want to add anything? Okay.
Any questions at this time?
One quick question without, I read it and I forgot what it was. What's our minimum for light trespass?
Half a foot candle, point five. Yes, at the property line. Yes.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this time? If not, we open the public hearing for public comment. If you have public comments to make, if you would state your name for the record before you speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Overfield. I have a letter with some additional photos. And the photos never really do it justice. I'm sorry about that. And I did submit, excuse me. I did submit some photos last week as well. Oh, excuse me, I'm Collins, representing Eric and Diana Barton, or Reeves. And my initial letter of appeal to the commissioners outlines really a chronology of what's going on and what has occurred. The light was out for nine months. From May of 2021 to February 21st of 2022. And that's the light, the floodlight that shines on the, on the Barton property. There's one floodlight shining their way along with other assorted lights. And then Mr. Reeves, who's back here with the glasses on, he, there's one floodlight and then two other coach lights that are very bright. This issue is not about foot candles at the property line. This is about what they see every single night. It's about the nuisance, it's about the light trespass onto their property. And when you look at the regulations, the DSR. Chapter four, section 3B9 of the 2015 regs. Number nine, lighting. The purpose is to establish outdoor lighting standards that reduce impacts of glare, light trespass. We have light trespass in this case, over lighting, we have over lighting, sky glow, we have sky glow. And poorly shielded or inappropriately directed lighting to promote safety and energy conservation. And then it lists three ways that that's achieved. All outdoor, under 9A, all outdoor lighting fixtures shall be designed, aimed, located and maintained to shield adjacent properties. And not produce glare unto adjacent properties or roadways. If that was the sole standard, if, there's a violation. The next subsection B. Lights shall be fully shielded, fully shielded, down-directed and screened to limit light trespass to 0.05 of a foot candle as measured at the property line. Motion sensor lights must only be triggered by motion within the boundaries of their property and remain lit for duration of 15 minutes or less. These lights are on all night, every night. And if you would look at those lights in the notice of appeal and then the exhibit D that I sent the, the other day. This is my June 27th letter. It identif, it has a map showing the Reed's residence, the shop light and the coach lights. Now this is what Mr. Reeves views every night. And then it shows his property line and what it looks like across his property line. That, that is the light across his property line where his kids have their tent that they really no longer use because it's lit up by this floodlight. Mr. Reeves is also an astrophotographer, if I'm saying that correctly. He can't, he can't do that there now because there's so much light trespass onto his property. This is what it looks like from the Reed's property. All night, every night. And this is a mercury vapor light. Or no, this is a, it's not mercury vapor, it's the, the new light, the brightest light, LED light. And Mr. Reeves will show you what that looks like. But another photo of the trespass and then the light on the shop. Doesn't look down-directed to me. And then his, I, I have Mr. Reeves's statement and Mr. Barton, excuse me, Mr. Reeves's statement is attached to the original notice of appeal. The, the new photos that I just handed out to you today are similar to the photos that I gave you with the notice of appeal, but they're better photos from the Barton property. And we believe that it certainly shows that there is significant light trespass. And, and the Barton property is about 1600 feet away. And it's this west light that is shown on the Reed house here, the west floodlight that shines directly. And that's the light. And it, 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 it's kind of, it's got a, it's not necessarily down-directed, it's on the top when you look at that light. This is 1600 feet away. And these are, these are different shots that, that Mr. Reeves helped the Barton's take. And as I said, they're difficult to see. There's one picture of Mr. Reeves and Mr. Barton standing in front of the house at night. And you can see their shadows on the wall from the Reed's lights. They can see it in their house, they can see it on their ceiling, every night, all night. There are other neighbors who've complained to the Reed's as well. And the Reed's have, or the, the Reed's have the right to light up their property, but certainly not light up everyone else's property. This is a simple fix. Down-direct those lights, limit their, their reach onto the others' property. Mr. Reeves has never asked the Reeds to shut off the lights, he's asked them to do something about the lights. You've all lived in Wyoming most of your lives and you know what it's like to have an obnoxious light shining at you all the time. Well, that's what they're dealing with. It, it has nothing to do with foot candles at the property line. And if, I don't know if it was laying on the ground, but they're not laying on the ground. They're viewing this thing all the time, these lights. And really, they, they are simple fixes. And they have the same right of safety and security and no light trespasses the Reeds do. And we, we strongly believe that the, the regulation is not being read properly or interpreted properly. It's not, it's not, and it is, it's not, and you don't have to satisfy both of those, it's or. And the or is in 9A clearly violated in this case. So we have one person, one couple who wants to light up their house and their property. But we have the Barton's and the Reed, and Mr. Reeves, and then two other people who I mentioned in the notice of appeal that, that say they see it in their house as well. So clearly, it's, it's not, it, it isn't significant factor. And under, under that section 9B. We believe that it is a clear violation. And it must be, Mr. Reeves, excuse me, Mr. Reed needs to be, how do you do it, by resolution? I'm assuming that, that you adopt a resolution requiring the Reeds to maintain all their outdoor lighting fixtures. And located and maintained to shield the adjacent properties and not produce glare onto the adjacent properties. And I, I don't know, I don't know how many of these types of cases you deal with. But many times you have to see it to believe it. And in this case, that, that would help. Mr. Reeves, would you like to show us what, what an LED light looks like a little bit? And we can, we can move that screen back up unless you need it, Duke or Kurt.
You can put it up, we had put it down.
No, no, no.
Are you sure?
So I'm gonna shine this ceiling rather than down because it's hard to see. I work in television. My job is a lot of things, also works with light, shaping light, focusing light, how. This is an 80 watt. So some people pretend to put up a light. It is what it is. That's what it does. Like for cats, they can't go with the lights and go whatever, pretend to, see how wide that goes. This is a little piece of tent. Just like you could put on and up your light. And you'll notice right there, it's just as intense as it was. But from the side. Now, figure one of those is my property line. You can control that light. You can keep it on. Instead of, hey, we put up this light, we're sorry we light up the property, but we can't. It's not that difficult to do. And that is all I'm asking. My right of privacy to decide whether my other property is lit up or not lit up. Pretty sure the rag follows that and whatever, how you interpret that, tent of the rag is, hey, let's not go wild with this. If we're paint, and somebody came out and painted an acre and a half of my property, we can talk to the chair. But every night, I get one guy there and I see light all over the front of my house, front of my property. I'm supposed to deal with that and be okay with that. And I never did ask them to turn the light on. I did ask them to keep it off my property. And I didn't want to hear that.
Thank you, Kurt.
Madam Chair, may I, I forgot to add one little thing. The Reeds told me several times, the reason for the lights are for their safety and security. I forgot to mention that. I did want to get that in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we all have issues. We all have our issues in our lives. Safety and security does not trump that the other property owners around you, their right to live light-free if they want to. And without a, a real intrusive lighting. And that's what, that's what we believe this is, very intrusive and obnoxious. They can, they can light up their property, but direct it properly. So it doesn't light up everyone's property. And that, they have it. For some reason, the purpose of the, the regulation is being ignored. Reduce impacts of glare, light trespass, over lighting, sky glow and poorly shielded or inappropriately directed lighting. It's not that difficult. How far out do they want to go with the light? That's not fair to anyone and it's not. That's not fair to anyone and it's not, that's not what property rights are and we have light trespass, we have. Other types of trespass other than just on the ground, but this is light trespass and. Uh, we would ask that you direct them to to. Follow the the regulations and in a manner and cooperatively, I believe would be best if possible, so. The Barton's and Mr. Reed's can say, yeah, that's okay, I can live with that. Um, and it shouldn't be that difficult to do.
But Kurt, I have just one quick question, so it seems to me from. What you're saying here, the only one light really in question is the big LED light on the shop.
Two, two lights.
The one year like, uh, Mr. Barton, you know, the west, the light on the west end of the house. Is the light that Tim said is not fully shielded or downward facing. And that's the one, the elevation of our deck and bedroom, which is inside the deck is approximately forty feet higher. Than the elevation of the Reed's residence and that light is lighting up the interior of our residence. When I lay in bed at night, I look at a reflection of our ceiling fan on the ceiling and reflections of. Also on the wall.
And then Mr. Reed's, yeah, that's the one off the shop.
Off the shop, that's the one you're.
Madam Chair, can I, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
So um, Mr. Simpson has mentioned glare a couple of times, yeah, that is in our regs under nine A where it talks about not produce glare. I looked up a definition of glare. The def- one definition of glare is very harsh, bright, dazzling light. The point I'm trying to make is glare is very subjective. The Reed's would probably say our lights are not producing glare on neighboring properties. Their neighbors today are, would probably say, well, it is producing glare, very subjective. However, Jenny and I collected numbers, we collected data and you know, I, you can't refute the numbers that we collected.
And I guess that's along along those lines. If we're we're we're. We have to go by the regulation, what we have in the regulation. Um, and as Mr. Dillman says, is the, is glare subjective, I can say that light's glaring. Um, but if if you have a number that's measured by, that's what we have to go by, does the number need change? I don't know, but at this point in time, this is, this is the regulation that that everyone's operating under.
Kurt, go ahead and stand up in the.
One thing about Peters, I work in a business that actually works with Peters. They're very focused on an average, okay? How they work is they average field of view of what they use. If you have a pinpoint of light in there, it doesn't average out very high. Just like the meter on your camera, you see that sometimes, they take pictures. So yeah, I, those things are incredibly intense and you've seen that when you're driving down the road and somebody comes at you with a right hand. See how intense that can be? My perception is, it's pretty simple to say, why wouldn't we do that? Why would we say, well, you have to just deal with it because we don't feel like resolving your problem?
Mr. Simpson, did you have anything additional while? Um, further comments, yes, sir? Your name, please?
So really owners of the property, me, I'm a army veteran of twenty seven years in the medical force. And I graduated uh, from uh, N S A, that's the uniform service at a medical school. I left the army after twenty seven years of school role. And I had many years as experienced oncologist there, I was chief oncology of Old Trafford. My last four years. And that's actually what brought us here, I was recruited here to be in charge of the Big Earth Base Campus. Which is what I've been doing for the past eighteen months. So it's exactly the kind of area that people looked for when we came here. And it's a wonderful cancer center, great staff, great nurses, so I'm very fortunate to be in that position. And so we've been here for the past uh, year and a half or so, a year and a half in this one. A lot of people from Wyoming consider us locals, which we really appreciate, we can give that as very my heart. It's definitely considered outsiders. Yeah, it's made it so to be considered as outsiders. So the documents said you have found your complaints, the complaints in the appeals, indications of complaints in Park County, so. Results of conclusion to the department's investigation of the potential white trespass to our letter, our letter to you all. Uh, in that letter, we state explicitly, out of rationale, why we have mainly the security gate. My current wife's syndrome, who was brutally raped in high school, uh, she was unconscious, intubated. In the ICU, rather than me explaining things. Uh, she described herself, why we have the lights.
And I'm sorry, I'm emotional, I haven't talked about this much, it's very hard. Um. I don't think they have put themselves in my position. I have to live with this every day. For one, the light on the Clary building is the lights they're putting throughout Park County, it is a three-way shielded light. The light on the back of our house doesn't go further than, much further than our fence line, it lights up our backyard. It gives me security. If that's what that does, I think they would do that for their wife or daughter if that happened, I don't think we would be here. They haven't once put me into consideration, it's all about them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
When the appeals first expressed to us their concerns about the lighting, uh, both Cindy and I informed them. Prior to this hearing, Cindy's history was quite a matter, done to better few. Now, because of this appeal, as a direct consequence of the appeals refusing to accept the conclusions. Of your, of department, you have to vet your account to make Cindy's history. Couple other things I heard. That you heard just a few minutes ago. Contrary to the council's uh, comments, I've actually specifically talked to. Our neighbors, the customers, the movements, and Nelsons, they have no problems with the lights. They say this is Wyoming, whichever you want to do, provided it's within the county regulations, they have no problems. The light on the Clary building is to county code, our electrician. Has put it, that light, the one that's put the on the device. Is to county code, if that one is wrong, then every county, every light in this county is incorrect, of course it's not. So that is a theory to code. And the regulations, as described here earlier, does not include, just because they don't like it, as much. And the last thing. Uh, so given that we've broken no regulation or statute, as I cherish Cindy's vote being, I ask, I ask you, we ask you. That you find for your own planning and zoning required without any appeal. Thank you for letting us talk.
Any further comments from the public?
My name is Seth Schumay, I'm attorney over here, I represent Tom and Cindy. I know there's a lot of discussion about they, the lighting trespassing on other people's property, but it was. These folks who initiated the process by which we stand here today. And you have an objective uh, set of rules and regulations that you've adopted. It takes the subjective out of it because you can't. Some people are more susceptible to lighting than others, I I get the sensitivity some people may have and that's all subjective. But the light that was shown here today doesn't have shade on it, it wants a question and does on the Clary building. And you employ people to see if there are violations of those regulations you've adopted. And and these folks went out and did their job. And they used objective standards by which to measure the light, whether or not it's trespassing on anyone else's property. And they have done their report, they have done their investigation. They've used uh, light meters to verify it and even verified the light meter they used in this situation. To show that their light meter they employed in this circumstance was accurate. These folks don't like the outcome of that, I understand that. And there's some mention of passing a resolution to direct them to. Either have a new standard to be uh, enforced upon them. It's clearly not to enforce the objective standards you've already adopted. It's their subjective uh, evaluation of the light, lighting system out there. Uh, to try to get this body to change course, to change its own regulations that it's already adopted. So I I think that you stand behind your folks that you, you hired to do this job. To enforce these rules, to see if there's a violation or not, they don't find one. And so with that, I would close, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
I've got a quick question, I'm not sure you can answer or not. But I'm just curious, if if security is the reason for the lights, which that seems to be the case. Then why was the light turned off from May of twenty twenty one to February of twenty twenty two?
Well, because I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I was trying to see if I could live without it, I was doing everything, I I go to counseling. I was, I talked to our neighbors who's a big time police officer, he has top security at his. Next door, I I can't do it, I I'm sorry, I cannot do it, I have tried, I have. Tried for them, I I cannot do it, I I I can't do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just can't do it. I I have to be able to. I I have to be able to feel safe and I, unless you've been through what I've been through, nobody can understand.
I don't, I, I totally understand, I just.
I know, and but they don't. And and they hate us, they they hate comments to our tenants, which is so inappropriate. Putting trees on the property lights so they don't have to look at our faces, like, and how old are we? Uh, why, why are you so angry over a light? And hate us over lights, we are good people, if you want to hold anger and hate us over lights. Do it, but you know what, that's not us, we will not hold anger, we are not that type of people, we are great Christian people. And and they can live with, live with that hatred, but we're not going to, we're going to live our lives and be great Christian people. And that's all I have to say.
Yep, let me ask you, just one more quick question.
Sure.
You know, it seems to me we've got problems with neighbors here rather than a lighting problem at all, honestly. And I understand your need for security, I totally understand that and I certainly appreciate where you're coming from. If you put those, the two lights in question on motion sensors, would that give you the sense of security that you need?
It won't.
If, can I ask why?
Because I need them on all the time, I don't like that it, that on off.
I know, and and one, and the correspondence, uh, one of your neighbors, I believe it was uh. Mr. Barton said that, you know, that they would be there to help protect you if need, if there was ever need arose. And if, to me, if I was a neighbor and you had a light sensor that came on in the middle of the night, that means that something's going wrong.
Let me answer that question, you know, uh, Mr. Barton came to our house and said that he's got more firepower than anybody else around. You know what, by the time I get a call at our house, we're not be able to call him or anybody else, it's going to be a done deal.
It happens within a second.
So I I don't appreciate that you give us, make us do any security in terms of motion sensor, sensors, that's even worth writing. That if some animal comes through, you don't know if it's an animal or somebody else.
Sure, I've, I've, I've got motion sensors in my house all the way out.
Yeah, and some people like them, we respect that, you're, what you're saying, we do, some people like that. I, I can't compromise with that. Oh, yeah, and they said one thing that really helps people is lighting. Is to make sure that you are are visibly able to see your surroundings. And so that's one thing that I have done, I am so aware of what's going around. He he can tell you, I am constantly looking around me, what's going on around me, whether it's night or day. And so that, I mean.
Okay, um, I have a question here.
Just one quick doctor, have you. Tried shielding the light so that it covers your property and doesn't go over. Into the neighbors and would that sedate of of your security concerns?
Well, there's just two lights, the light front of the west side, which does not go on to the Barton's property at all, the reading is zero. They just don't like it.
But the one that does, if you shielded it so that it covers your property on.
It already has three base shields.
And it's already a county code.
That's what they're putting throughout Park County, the electrician said.
And unless you're directly looking at it, it's not going to the house, it's shaded on to the property, maybe five feet.
That's it, it doesn't, you can't even see his house at night.
Okay. I do have another lady that would like to speak, so if, very quickly.
I am absolutely sympathetic. Absolutely, where I'm lying. Is when you're lighting up over an acre of my property. Why, why should I have to suffer through that? It could be directed, just so you know, be directed.
Thank you.
That doesn't work for them.
Okay, thank you. Um, lady in the back, please, you'd identify yourself first?
I'm Diana Barton. And I don't understand lightning moves, all I understand is when I sit on my deck at night. Their big light is overpowering and they can say it's not coming into my property, but obviously it's lighting up my bedroom. And my kitchen and my living room is coming on my property and I'm sorry she has an issue. But I would think that just putting a hood on it so that it doesn't shine directly into my house. Would give her plenty of light, it would give her all the way, her entire property without it coming in my bedroom. You also have two very large doors, don't you?
If this is getting with.
Yeah, let's.
It's security, you're talking about.
Let's, let's stay with the light, please.
Anyway, it might, I really wish that everybody could sit on my deck at eleven o'clock at night and see what it's like.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
If I may, um, my name's Eric Barton, I'm not going to give you my full resume, but I was in law enforcement for twenty five years, twenty of which I worked with sex crimes. And when I was, the first time that I met Cynthia, I was working in my field, she came to the fence line. And one of the first things she said was having noticed our outdoor lights and I said, yes, that floodlight's a bit of a knock, it's lighting up our house. And she explained her, she described it as a rape situation. And I said, I can empathize with that. And then, and we had a discussion about numerous subjects, talked about law enforcement, whole world's problems. Then, and she had mentioned that light doesn't need to be on, I take the dogs out front, I'll tell Tom. So a couple of weeks passed, the light was still on, I went over there, knocked on their door. Tom came to the door and I said, can I talk to you about your floodlight? And he said, what about it? And I explained that it's hindering the lives of your neighbors, he wanted to know which neighbors, I explained which ones. They, I know that Chip Newton, it lights up his house and I had talked to him when I was helping him burn his field and he said, I'm going to call the garage. In front of my house, so that light doesn't bother me. Um, I know that they spoke with the Nelsons and Marvin Nelson's response was. We don't need to, now when I get up to go to the bathroom in the middle of the night, I don't have to turn a light on, which is the Wyoming way of saying, yes, it lights up our house. Um. As far as I can empathize with Cynthia's twenty years of dealing with sex crimes, I've seen it all. As far as the the light, and I don't know when the doctors in my house to know that it doesn't light up my house, perhaps I need to have a conversation with my wife about that. There's, it lights up the interior of my house, when I lay in bed at night, I see a reflection of the ceiling fan. I see reflections on the wall. The, when, and again, I sympathize, I can empathize with Cynthia. My wife Diana years ago worked in a convenience store on the midnight shift, she was robbed at gunpoint, she looks out that window and it looks like a train light coming at you. And it brings back bad memories. And it brings back bad memories for her. The things that I've experienced in my life, dead babies, a dead cop, I've seen a woman's face like a deflated basketball, their nose pushed against the skull and her brain out her ears. When I lay in bed at night, I used to be able to look up at the stars and not have to think about that. Now all of these memories are coming back. I used to have recurring nightmares all the time when I was working. I hadn't had them since I retired. The light went on and now my Diana wakes me up because I'm screaming at night because of of the nightmares. What I'm trying to say is, I don't, I can understand their situation. But I don't know that anybody understands that it's not just them. It's, everybody has problems they have to deal with. As far as the back light, the county report says it's not fully shielded or downward facing. The way the regulation is written, it's not or, it's and. So even if the, they have to be. All outdoor light fixtures shall be designed. That's not may, it's shall, which in court order shall means they must be. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. So that light should be designed, aimed, or located and maintained to shield adjacent properties. My argument is, is lights up the interior of my house, whether it's zero at the property line, which is a lower elevation in the house than the Reed house, compared to lighting up the interior of my house, which is approximately forty feet higher in elevation from, from theirs. It's, it's a nuisance and it's destroying our way of life as far as what we're used to doing, doing the outdoors of my own.
Thank you. Um, just one second. Mr. Simpson, is there anyone else that wants to speak for the first time? Give us any input? If it's quickly, okay, we're kind of running out of time here. Okay, thank you. Mr. Simpson, if we can.
Yeah, we're all wrapped up. Madam Chairman, I don't know what you do when you're sitting on your deck, neither of the lines, to shield the light. And part of living in Wyoming and the beauty of it is that we can see the stars in the sky. And we don't have to feel like we're living under a spotlight. And I, 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 it seems to me that, that the Reed's are fortunate to have people around them that have law enforcement, uh, all, all, you know, that it, it's too bad that it's become this and by no means did we disclose anything about Mrs. Reed's condition, by no means. And we did that intentionally. Uh, and so I, I, I take offense to the fact that somehow it's been disclosed because of our appeal of a lighting issue. But back to the issue of down directed, knock off, knock it down, keep it down under their property line. It's not that difficult. Please, you have the authority to do that. And, and we believe it's within the rules and regulations. We need your help. And I do not believe it's simply, if, if it doesn't show up on the light meter, it's not a problem. That's not, that's not the way the regs are made. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Further public comment? Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Thoughts from the commissioners?
Chair, I just want to say that, you know, in twenty fifteen, when our last summer regulations were updated, there probably wasn't a whole lot of LED lights out there. And I think we can all agree that LED lighting is a lot more nuisance than, than the old uh, element type. Um, I'm not a light expert, but I do know that when you meet new cars with these new fancy lights, they, they're, even though they're supposedly not supposed to bother you, they're paid. So looking at that, I know moving forward especially for the land use plan, I do think we may want to look into this a little bit more in the just for regulations. However, at this point in time, feelings are, um, we don't want to also set a precedent that every little, every type of light or abuse, uh, something that violates my space and set some type of precedence that will consider every, we already have standards to go by, I guess is what I'm saying. And we either change the standards altogether or, or, and look into the new type of lighting and, and trespass or go with what our standards are. I know that the half foot candlelight, um, may not have been met here, but I do, I, I will agree that there is probably a nuisance with the type of lighting that we have. That's just my input at, but at this point in time, I'm kind of on the fence, but I don't really, of course, we don't support these people. But I'm open for discussion here.
Joe? Asking?
No.
Oh, no, Madam Chair, I, I, I agree with, the standards need be looked at possibly, but right now that's what we're operating under. Um, I, you know, when you say that the lights have to be shielded so they don't produce glare, well, you have to measure that somehow. And right now that's what we have in front of us is way that's been determined. There's folks ahead of us that figured that this is the way to, uh, to remedy a, a light trespass situation. And at this point in time, based upon the reports from the planning zoning, light trespass is not occurring. Does it, is it neighbors not getting along?
Yeah.
I don't know. That's, that's between the neighbors. And if, if maybe, you know, they should figure out a way to, uh, to get along. But at this point in time, I believe we're operating under the standards that have been set before and that's what we're, uh, we're held to operate under.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I could, you know, our, when you, when you look at our rules and regulations, part of them are very objective. And that's the illumination of the light to the property line. That's a very objective thing. When you take into the other part of it, that Mr. Simpson brought up, the nuisance part of it. And I do believe the lights are a big nuisance. There's no question about that. I can remember years ago coming out of Wapiti Ridge, riding a horse at, at night, when there was very few people living on the south shore. And everything was great. You come off there today and you're blinded by the lights and they're eight to ten miles away. You know, and so I can certainly sympathize with the neighbors. And I don't think we should be in a position right now to interpret our rules and regulations because one side is objective and the other side is very subjective. And I guess I would just ask the neighbors to try and get along. And, and, you know, Mrs. Reed, I certainly understand your problem and I, I empathize with your condition. I truly do. But can you try some different things? You know, I suggest the motion sensor. You said, no, that's just not going to work.
You have a less light, we put a, a less, the light bulb is even.
Uh huh. You know, maybe you could try them different angles and tilt them down and those types of things. Cause I, I live out in the country and I know how true that lights can be. And I enjoy living in the country, as Mr. Simpson pointed out. We all like living in the country and looking at the stars and the mountains. And there's, there's nothing more beautiful than a winter night with snow on the ground and the stars are shining. And you don't want somebody's light shining in your face. So, I mean, everybody's got private property rights. And so I just ask you to try and cooperate.
I understand that. It's hard to, to want to do that when you're hearing equal things about you.
I, I, I totally understand.
Yes, Madam Chair, it just seems like our regulation certainly needs to be tweaked a little bit too, because, um, the first part A is a definition of glare. And like what Ken said, that, you know, you could have all kinds of definitions for that. But A would be a violation, but when we get into B section where it has a meter imposed back then that didn't in, we didn't know about LED lighting, then, then it does go through. So basically it's, it's our regulation that is allowing these lights to come in. So just in the future, maybe we need to tweak that a little bit or get a definition of glare or imposition. But we're gonna, we're probably going to be running into this a lot more uh, with people moving into the county, but next to each other. And this will certainly be, I'm sure popping up again, but it helps having like what Joe said, is the neighbors cooperating and, and keeping it on their own property. And not sneaking across. So, but by the looks of the regulations that we have, uh, section B, as Commissioner Till had said, uh, our hands are, are basically tied to that regulation as well. So I don't know what the solution is. Change our regulations, so.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and stick my neck out there. You know, because our, our regulations, our lighting standards are forbid, I do not believe that there is a violation of our county standards. So with that being said, I'll make the motion to deny the appeal. But with that being said, I would urge the neighbors to try and cooperate. And this problem's going to become more and more prevalent in Park County as we get more and more people moving in. And Mrs. Reed, as I've said in the past, I certainly understand your problems. But there's got to be a solution where you can take care of your problems and not infringe on the property rights of your neighbors. And that's, that's all I'm asking is try and cooperate. There are solutions to these problems. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the appeal as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Colleen, you could put the screen up, please. Hey, the next order of business today is, um, Kim Delvin and Jenny from the Park County Planning and Zoning Office with the amended plot of four star subdivision, lot twenty.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this property is in a GR five zoning district. The planning area is the lower South Fork. The applicant is Nick Greigus. And we did receive an application for this amended plat, including payment on May twenty third of this year. And then we received a revised amended plat on June eighth. And you, and you've got a chance to see that. That's figure eight. So the applicant requests approval of this amended plat it, of the four star subdivision. As you said, currently it's lot twenty. It will vacate lot twenty, which is five point three three acres and reconfigure lot twenty to create lot twenty A, which will be ten point one two acres. And this will essentially be a lot line adjustment, moving that lot line north into a property that is not part of the subdivision. It's an unplanted parcel. And it, um, and that new addition to what is currently lot twenty will be four point seven nine acres. And that north parcel currently is just over twenty seven acres. This, the new lot twenty eight will be for residential use. History, four star subdivision was approved in nineteen seventy seven by the Park County Board of County Commissioners. It originally created a thirty lot subdivision. Uh, then seventeen lots are further subdivided in nineteen, um, in nineteen ninety four. And in June of nineteen ninety six, lot one and lot two were vacated from the subdivision. In terms of ownership, essentially, there's been some change in ownership because there was a death. But currently lot twenty is owned by Mary Ann Swope. And the adjacent parcel to the north is also now solely owned by Mary Ann and Swope. And I said that, Madam Chair, this is lot twenty, the four star subdivision, the location you can see in figure two. There, both of these properties are approximately four miles southwest of Cody. They're at the end of Moonlot Drive. So this is a partial vacation of an existing plat. And a final plat is required for, uh, or is permitted to change the boundary line between a planted lot and a adjacent unplanted parcel. Amendment plat is required, has to be approved by the board. Board can't approve it without a public hearing. And we decided, again, the planning director and Jenny, myself, decided that rights of other lot owners will not be compromised or obligated. Therefore, we thought a, uh, public hearing is not required. We did receive the required fee and the draft amended plat. I mentioned you, uh, I mentioned to you that, again, we felt no public hearing is necessary. In terms of zoning district, this is GR five and the lot size as proposed is consistent with the GR five zoning district. We do have a map on page five in figure three, which shows neighboring property owners. So to the west of this property is residential, to the south is residential. To the north, there's exempt. And I'm not sure the manager of that exempt property, I, I assume BLM or Bor, to the east of this property is agriculture. Terms of site characteristics, you can see in figure four that there are two residents and there's accessory structures. I'm sorry, um, figure four, Madam Chair, shows a topo map. However, existing lot twenty does have two residences and some accessory structures. And the unplanted parcel is vacant and undeveloped land. And the part, topography, as you can see in four, is, is, um, fairly level, fairly flat. And my understanding is, is none of this, uh, either the parcel or the lot, neither are in any overlay districts. We've not received any public comments. We did have a plat review committee meeting on June sixth. There were some changes identified. And then we received the revised amended plat on June eighth, which you had a chance to see. Again, the required two hundred dollar fee was paid. Again, we determined no public hearing necessary on this final plat, this amended plat of the final plat. There is a place for, um, certi- certification of dedication, a signature line for Mary Ann Swope and Nicholas Greigus as power of attorney. The plat is titled the amended plat of lot twenty of four star subdivision. We have some findings that you had a chance to read. Our recommendation is that you approve this partial vacation and amended plat, lot twenty of the four star subdivision. And we just essentially have one condition that we're recommending. Madam Chair, we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions from the commissioners? It's not a public hearing. Is there any comment from the owner? Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the rocking horse amended plats, no, excuse me, four star subdivision amended plat.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended final plat for lot twenty of four star subdivision. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. You gave her, gave him sixty.
This is six.
Sixty one.
Sixty one. All right. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Kim, whenever you're ready, the next one's not a public hearing either, so.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So the next item for your consideration is final plat review. This is for what will become, should you approve it, the rocking horse in Buffalo Ranch, simple subdivision. And number two eighty nine, the applicant is Timothy McNutt. This land is in the GR five zoning district. The planning area is the North Fork. We did receive the final plat application from Mr. McNutt on June second of this year, including documents that are required. We did get a revised final plat on June twentieth, and that is in figure one. You had a chance to see that. The applicant requests approval of this final plat. It will be a two lot, simple subdivision. Lot one will be twelve point seven one acres and lot two will be fourteen point nine two. Of course, the existing parcel, the total of that is twenty seven point six three. We have classified this as a simple subdivision, creating two lots from this parcel. We have classified this as a simple subdivision, creating two lots from this parcel. Figure one shows that final plaque. Then this proposed subdivision is located 11, approximately 11 miles west of Cody. You can see that in figure two. Stagecoach Trail, you're all familiar with this property, or at least the, the things around it. Stagecoach Trail goes through this, and the North Fork of the Shoshone is just on the north side of this current property. I mentioned this is in GR5. And in our staff report on page four, we should say, I should have said, the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with the GR5 zoning district. However, these lots are consistent with GR5. And in figure three, you can see some of the surrounding land uses. There's agriculture on the north side of the river. There's some residential, a little bit to the north and to the east. BLM is just on the south side of this property. And to the east is BRO managed property. In terms of site characteristics, this property does have some slope to it, sloping down to the river. I would say it's, it's a significant slope. And the northern portions of both these proposed lots are within the FEMA floodplain. There is a Loma that was granted in 2010. And there are steep slopes and some rockfalls, potential rockfalls that exist on this property. And in figure four, Madam Chair, you have a chance to see the location of this property, again, relative to Stagecoach and relative to the Shoshone River. Notice of intent to subdivide, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. This property is not within a mile of the city of Cody. Municipal review is not required. Notice of intent, that was published on May 5th, or I'm sorry, on April 5th and April 12th of this year. In terms of agency referrals, as a subdivision, we have a list of agencies we have to notify. Then we notified other ones that we thought might have an interest. Park County Fire District 2, they responded with the letter. We shared with you they can provide fire protection. TCT responded. They said they may have the ability to provide internet and phone service. Park County School District Number 6 responded that, basically saying they always try, do their best, and will provide bus service to those students who need it. Pulse Service said they will be able to provide mail delivery, should this be approved, and when placement of mailboxes is determined. The Park County Treasurer stated taxes are paid current. Public Works responded with a, a, an engineering review of the sketch plan. We shared that with you. They made some statements. They talked about there could be some issues with a right-of-way permit from them, especially for lot two. My assumption is because maybe of, of the elevation and rockfalls and things like that. Do you had a chance to read that? Of course, they said the, the lots will need to be addressed, and right-of-way permits will be required. They said a drainage and erosion control, they will consider that in, in reviewing any future building right-of-way permits. And they said a stormwater runoff will not be, plan will not be permitted to drain into the county road surface from the lots. Game and Fish responded. They said they have concerns regarding aquatic resources, essentially because they're right next to the North Fork of the Shoshone, Blue Ribbon Trout Fishery. They also said they have some wildlife concerns. Evidently, the property is in crucial mule dealer winter range. And as a result, they recommend no human activity from the middle of November to the end of April each year. Of course, they also said this is in grizzly bear habitat. And they want the future owners and the applicant to be, to be bear aware. Rocky Mountain responded in an email. They stated they have the capacity to serve both these lots. There is no current power, and of course, this is a simple, so there doesn't have to be current power. But Rocky Mountain Power said they could provide power. Weed and Pest Mary completed initial inspection. She found noxious weeds. She does require a noxious weed management plan. My understanding is that's, that's already been approved. And I do believe we have a copy of that. The Cody Conservation District, they shared with us a Soles report. We have in our staff report a summary of what they found. The Wyoming State Engineers Office, they can, they confirmed there are no water rights on this parcel. They also confirmed there is an Upton ditch that runs through the property. It's unorganized, and right-of-way exists for the ditch. We've not received any public comments, Madam Chair. We had our, our plant, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this sketch plan on May 18th of this year. They had a number of conditions. I'll just mention a handful of those, well, most of those actually. There was one talking about right-of-way permits from Park County Public Works Department. That condition has been met. There was another one that the ditch be identified, the Upton ditch. That condition has been met. Another condition was right-of-way regarding Upton ditch. That condition has been met. One was a condition or a note on the final plat saying there are no water rights. That's been a met. Condition was the long-term noxious weed management plan be approved. That's been met. Another one was a statement, no water analysis conducted. That statement go on the final plat, that is on the final plat. Warming right to farm and ranch act, that was a condition. That's been met. There was a condition regarding the floodplain. That has been met. There was also a condition regarding a note, portions of lots one and two possibly have hazards regarding steep slopes. That has been met. And there was a condition talking about proposed water wells, and that condition has been met. And another one regard, a condition talking about the natural flow of any stream or river that seldom is not warrant people to have access, or the rights to that water. That condition has been met. Plat Review Committee met on June 8th. There were some minor corrections and changes. We received a revised final plat on June 20th, which we shared with you. Otherwise, we just have in our staff report conditions for final plat. We have some findings of fact. We recommend that you approve this final plat with the one condition that we have listed on page 12 that we're recommending. Madam Chair, we're happy to answer questions that you might have.
Just a question, Madam Chair, about the Loma Act of 2000. Can I just catch me up on the Loma?
Um, land, oh, letter of map amendment. Yeah, and that, I believe that year was the date it was approved.
Right.
And so that took, I'm not sure if it took all the property out of the floodplain or just portions of it.
A considerable amount.
So now, if, if, if portions of the, that are on the floodplain, does that still qualify them for like the government buyback of floodplain properties and such? And by dividing this, would it make it more valuable?
I, yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner Ringgold. I don't know.
Any other questions for the commissioners? It's a pleasure.
Madam Chair. Second, with conditions was recommended by staff.
They moved and seconded to approve Rocking Horse M Buffalo Ranch, simple sub 289, final plat as presented with condition. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, commissioners.
You seconded that, right?
Yes. I think I'm going to sit in with Joy on the, on the. So I can take it.
Good morning. Who else? And the side goes back. Just keep forgetting. They moved and they fixed the ceiling. Smooth side chairs, back facing front. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing, or Leroux FP3-22. County Planning Director, Joy Hill.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. I have the application of John F. Leroux Revocable Trust. This is for a floodplain development permit. Application was submitted to our office on June 9th, 2022. Additionally, there was supplemental documentation provided. And since the staff report went out, the applicants did provide some additional information, including a site plan, which you should have received by email as well. So this particular project is along the Shoshone River. It is the Lower Shoshone. It is in an RH, or Residential Half-Acre Zoning District. It's in the Cody local planning area. Landowner is requesting approval for after-the-fact construction in the map's special flood hazard area, which we call the floodplain, along the Shoshone River. The work completed includes the replacement of a road, vegetation clearing, and pier construction. I provided several figures in the Stafford report for you to see what exactly has been done. The applicant also provided additional photos with the application. And there are additional photos in the violation file numbered 03-22-A in the Planning and Zoning Department. The clearing, according to the applicant, consists of approximately one acre. According to the applicant, the roadwork was done in September of 2021 to add a switchback, so the grade wasn't so steep. The work done in the river bottom this spring was to cut and clear brush, Russian olives, and grass. The metal pier or small dock has two small decks and was installed this spring to be used for recreational purposes. The upper deck is 15 feet by 43 inches. The lower deck is eight feet by 48 inches. The decks are connected by two steps. The structure is made of galvanized steel grate and pipe. The decks are supported by steel piles that are driven into the riverbed. We did an aerial photography examination of the property based upon aerial photography available from the state of Wyoming. It is apparent that the road did not exist within the floodplain in 2017. We show figure six, and that's actually probably not correct. It is figure seven. And at some point in time between 2017 and 2019, roadwork is, was initiated, a portion of which was within the mapped floodplain. By 2020, additional roadwork and substantial clearing were apparent. The regulations that apply to this action, action are 2015 Park County Development Standards and Regulations, or refer to them as the Regulations, Chapter 4, Section 5A, Floodplain Overlay District. Obviously, our rules require the development of the floodplain be reviewed by you for your consideration. Ownership of this property is affirmed by the warranty deed reported as document 2019-2775 in the office of the Park County Clerk on June 5th, 2019. The property was deeded from two visions to John F. Leroux Revocable Trust dated February 10th, 2014. The property is located approximately one-quarter mile east-northeast of Cody, Wyoming, in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 53 North, Range 101 West, as shown in figure eight. The property on the southern three-quarters slopes gently from south to north. However, the northernmost portion of the property slopes steeply downward to the north towards the Shoshone River. You can see that in figure nine. There's an existing home and several outbuildings on the southern part of the property. This portion of the Shoshone River is below the Buffalo Bill Dam and reservoir. Outflows from the reservoir are closely monitored and regulated by the Bureau of Rec. As such, the dam offers incidental flood protection for areas downstream, such as this project site. The Shoshone River is classified as a blue ribbon stream by the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, and you can see that from their website. And blue ribbon streams are of national importance and are based upon a population of more than 600 pounds of trout per mile. Blue ribbon streams are recognized as special resources under Wyoming Stream Mitigation Procedure. In the neighborhood, we have, obviously, the river channel to the north. Adjacent properties otherwise are primarily residential, as shown in figure 10. There are public lands to the north and the northeast. Public notices were sent for this hearing to the Cody Enterprise for publishing on June 21st and June 28th of 2022. Neighbor notices were sent on June 20th, or June 16th of 2022 to all landowners within 660 feet of the property boundary. Agencies were also sent to relevant individuals on June 14th, 2022, including the county engineer, county treasurer, county weed and pest, fire district, fire inspector, game and fish, Corps of Engineers, the local conservation district, and Trout Unlimited. We have received several responses from different agencies. In an email of April 13th, 2022, Kim Johnson, the National Blood Insurance Program State Coordinator, indicated that permits are required for this development, and US Army Corps of Engineering view is necessary. In an email dated June 14th, 2022, the Park County Treasurer's Office indicated that taxes were paid in full on the property. In an email dated June 17th, 2022, Mr. Kevin Little from the Army Corps of Engineers indicated that he visited the property and provided a letter citing noncompliance with Nationwide Permit 14 for not submitting a pre-construction notification prior to constructing the road. He requested submittal of an after-the-fact PCN. Further, Mr. Little indicated the dock was constructed in a manner that is not regulated by their agency. In a letter dated June 20th, 2022, a commercial leasing manager for the Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investments stated that any access across or work performed on state lands will require prior authorization from the state. In an email dated June 21st, 2022, Jerry Parker from the Park County Fire Protection District Number 2 stated that the district has no comments. In an email dated June 21st, 2022, several representatives from DEQ acknowledged that projects of at least one acre but less than five acres and not part of a larger common plan require a small construction general permit as permit by rule. And the permittee is required to have a current stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWIP, that meets the permit requirements. Additional comments regarding best practices were included, as well as requirements for stabilization of the site. In a letter dated June 22nd, 2022, the county engineer indicated the following in summary. There does not appear to be a substantial import of earth and material, though there appears to be fairly substantial cut disturbance into the hillside. He does not anticipate that the improvements will cause an increase in the base flood elevations for the Shoshone River and surrounding areas. He has two concerns. The way the road is cut in, there could be increased potential for scour and erosion of the riverbank during flood conditions. And two, there is a potential for pier structure or portions of the pier structure to be dislodged and washed downstream during flooding. If the platforms or portions of the pier supports are dislodged, they could potentially cause problems downstream when mixed with other debris during, common during a flood event. Accumulation of debris during a flood event is a legitimate improvement concern. In a letter dated June 29th, 2022, Mary McKinney, Park County Weed and Pest, stated that a long-term noxious weed management plan will not be required of the applicant. However, she recommends that the applicant continue to follow best management practices for controlling the spread of noxious weeds. At the time of writing, no public comments had been received since the time of the application other than questions from Mr. Tom Brown on behalf of Trout Unlimited and Mr. Nathan Danforth, seeking the status of the process and answers from relevant agencies. However, Mr. Brown, Mr. Danforth, and others brought this development to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Department in March of this year, citing concerns about the road washing out and the dock flooding, accumulating debris and/or becoming dislodged, thus creating a hazard. Those who reported the development have been closely observing this activity and are strongly opposed to this type of development. And that would be roads and docks, piers, along the Shoshone River, setting a precedent for the addition of more roads and docks, piers, and the subsequent cumulative effects of such development. The complaints led to an investigation, which resulted in the issuance of a notice of violation to the landowner. Again, I referenced that violation file earlier in this report. And in response to the notice of violation, the landowners proceeding with permitting process in an attempt to come into compliance. I will mention that over the weekend and today, we have received a number of public comments. You have actually received all of them by email, so I will not read them at length. However, I will just quickly summarize. Nathan Danforth emailed you on Saturday, July 7th. He is opposed to this use. He indicated that there was no opportunity for the effects of the floodplain to be reviewed. This work was done without a permit. The projects have incorporated dirt work and road building along the bank in, below the historic high watermark. He believes that there is the opportunity for additional or accelerated erosion during high-water events. He's concerned about the dock. At the river flow of 5,000 cubic feet per second, the dock was almost completely submerged. You did see a picture of that in the staff report. I'll talk a little bit more about river flow here in just a minute. He's concerned that manmade hazards like these are known to pin boats and people and could lead to potential drownings. He is opposed. Landon Blanchard wrote to you on Saturday, July seventh, second, sorry. He's a local business owner who relies on income generated via accessibility to the river. In summary, constructing a steel pier with navigable channel of the river and below a substantial rapid river feature creates unnecessary risk of injury or loss of life by anyone who cannot avoid the obstruction. And he talks about river companies, private rafters, fishermen, as well as individuals using rented equipment. Talks about it impacting a public resource directly and that the river is a public resource. In general, he is opposed to this. He would like to be in attendance and ask that these comments may be public. So Landon may be here today. Taylor Henson also wrote Saturday, July second, indicating that he understands that it sets a precedent that landowners can do whatever they please along the river if this, if this development is permitted. This project provides for extreme hazards to recreationalists, such as boats or people who can become pinned or entrapped. It increase, the risk increases at higher flows. Concerned about during high flows, structures may be washed downstream, creating further hazard. Again, opposed to this particular development. Taylor also sent an additional email that included pictures of the dock and the dock being nearly covered, partially covered by floodwater or waters at five thousand CFS. Just this morning, while you were in hearings, Bonnie Sheridan sent an email. This individual noticed that they saw on social media that you're having to make decisions on river water and what is safest for the greater good. Just wondering if a private company using public waterways for their own personal gain, is this the company that also does not allow other rafters to dock off of their dock ramps? One of the notes in here that's sort of different than other, others is curious about people's rights on private property. Wondering if, how this dock will be thought about when a rafter has to contend with all types of natural boundaries, not to mention pylons holding up bridges. Again, these comments are available to you in full in your email. It did speak with, before I get to the standards of evaluation, I just got off the phone with Liz Cresto. She's from the Bureau of Reclamation. I was seeking information about average flows on this particular stretch of the river. She just did a quick look at data from nineteen eighty-five to present. It's approximately thirty-seven years. This river in this stretch was over five thousand CFS, at least nineteen of those years. The dam was raised in the nineteen nineties. She said the highest flow was just over eight thousand cubic feet per second in two thousand and eleven. On average, the flows are very variable. Moderate, moderately wet years, kind of your average year, three thousand to five thousand CFS is normal. Big water years, five thousand to six thousand CFS is normal. And in dry water years, it sometimes won't even reach fifteen hundred. But just wanted to give you a sense of the range of flows that have been seen on that stretch of the river. Again, Mr. Leroux did provide a bit of a site plan. This was an update from the original application. Sort of showing more specific acreage that were disturbed by this activity. And you have that information. So as you know, standards of evaluation analysis to approve or deny this permit, you shall base it on provisions of the regulations as follows. Number one, danger to life and property due to flooding or erosion damage. The applicant responds, the structure poses limited danger to life and property due to flooding or erosion damage. The structure is designed to withstand exposure to water and is anchored securely by steel piles driven into the riverbed. There is limited danger to people from a flood as it is very unlikely that the structure to be used for, I'm sorry, there's limited danger to people from flood as it is very unlikely that the structure to be used for recreational fishing and accessing a raft or canoe would be in use during a flood event. I wasn't completely sure what that text meant, and I did place it in the staff report. Staff's response, should any part of the dock pier structure become dislodged, it could pose a danger to life and property downstream, the potential for erosion damage to the road, which is exacerbated by the removal of vegetation, may also cause dangers to property due to flooding. Number two, the susceptibility of the proposed facility and its contents to flood damage and the effect of such damage on the owner. The applicant's response, the structure poses low risk of damage due to flood due to the construction materials and techniques, techniques and limited recreational use. Staff responds, the dock pier structure is within the water course. As such, it is susceptible to flood damage caused by rising waters, increased velocities of floodwaters and potential debris carried by such waters. The road is also susceptible to floodwaters and damage from erosive forces. Number three, the danger that materials may be swept onto other lands, the injury of others. Applicant's response, there is a possibility that the structure could be swept downstream during an extreme flood event, but it is unlikely due to the steel piles driven four feet into the riverbed. Staff responds, because the structure is within the water course, there is a danger that it could be swept onto other lands to the injury of others. This could occur in times of flooding or during times of normal river flows. Number four, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing and anticipated development. The applicant responds, the structure is for limited recreational use and is compatible with the use of the applicant's land as agricultural and residential. Staff responds, the property abuts a river. As such, it is reasonable to expect that the landowner may want to access the river from the property. However, no other dock or pier structure seems to exist, or I'm sorry, no structures exist along this reach of the Shoshone River. It is also not common for road development to occur into the floodplain along the river. Number five, the safety of access to the property in times of flood for ordinary and emergency vehicles. The applicant responds, the structure will not need to be accessed by emergency vehicles in times of flood due to limited recreational use. Staff responds, access to the property itself is not impacted by this development. However, access for emergency vehicles to the site of the dock pier during times of flood may be inhibited. Number six, the cost of providing governmental services during and after flood conditions, including maintenance and repair of streets, bridges and public utilities and facilities. The applicant responds, there will be no cost for governmental services due to the structure. Staff responds, it does not appear that the public utilities or facilities would be impacted and therefore no governmental cost result from this development. Number seven, expected heights, velocity, duration, rate of rise of sedimentation of the floodwaters. The applicant responds, the structure will cause no sedimentation. Staff responds, it is unclear whether the road development will lead to increased sedimentation over time due to sloughing and erosion. The dock pier structure as constructed could collect debris over time, resulting in potential increase in the height of floodwaters. The potential impacts vary. Number eight, the necessity to the facility for a waterfront location. The applicant responds, a waterfront location is necessary for fishing and boat access from a pier. Staff responds, the proposed dock or pier is intended to provide access to the water for recreational purposes. As such, the waterfront location is need to fulfill the intended use. Number nine, the availability of alternative locations not subject to flooding or erosion damage. The applicant responds, to accommodate the limited recreational use intended, a water location, waterfront location is necessary. Staff responds, the intention of the road and the dock pier is to gain access to the water. Within the property, there are not alternative locations to place this type of structure outside of a waterfront location on, in the floodplain. However, there are all, are alternative locations off property that are already disturbed where individuals may gain public access to the river. Number ten, the relationship of the proposed use to the land use plan. The applicant responds, the limited recreational use for the residents of the lot meet the uses of the land within the land use plan. Staff responds, that the nineteen ninety-eight land use plan specifies the county will regulate building and floodplanes, maintain a balance between human needs and protection of the environment and enforce existing laws on river channeling and river work. Regulation and enforcement of these laws of the floodplain is met with this permit. The county's reviews intended to balance impact property and environmental protection. Number eleven, where alteration or relocation of a water course is proposed, certification is required from an engineer, surveyor, or other qualified professional. The applicant states certification is not required as the water course is not altered or relocated, and staff agrees. Staff recommendation, section five, A two of the regulations in, in this chapter states the following. Flood losses may be caused or exacerbated by the cumulative effect of obstructions in areas of special flood hazard that increase flood heights and velocities and contribute to damages in other areas. While the impacts of this individual project may seem negligible, the board shall consider impacts that may result from additional projects of this type being proposed and completed along this reach of the Shoshone River. Recent historic flooding in the region serves as a reminder of how otherwise flood safe construction can quickly be swept away to the danger of others. As shown in this report, the dock pier structure has already been subjected to high flows, which essentially covered the structure. Repeated exposure of the structure to water in this manner is expected to weaken the structure over time. Certainly, the management of flows in this stretch assists with flood management, but is not a guarantee that flooding will not occur in the future within or beyond the map floodplain. If you should choose to approve this application, I recommend the following conditions. Number one, the floodplain development permit applies only to the vegetation clearing, road development and dock pier that has been constructed along the southeast bank of the Shoshone River, along the property addressed as two fifty-one Adams Lane, Cody, Wyoming. Number two, any changes to the proposed project or development in the floodplain that are not expressly addressed by this permit shall require a separate floodplain development permit. And number three, the applicant shall otherwise comply with the Park County, Wyoming, two thousand and fifteen Development Standards and Regulations. I've provided you a copy of all materials received by the applicant, the staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions at this time for Joy from the Commissioners? With that, this is a public hearing. So if anyone has anything that they would like to state, the first thing I need you to do is state your name for the record.
My name is Mary Reed and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes. If you could speak up. There's a mic here. Yeah, it's working.
Thank you. I represent Mr. John Leroux, who would revocable trust. Pretty in question, can you hear me? Is that all right? Okay, a floodplain development permit application.
It's not working, you might need to come up this way to stop the mic backbeat. Some of her sound is, is any guests that we have on Zoom, they can't hear if it's just in the room. There you go.
A floodplain development permit application was submitted on June nine, two thousand and twenty-two. The application is seeking a permit for the installation of a gravel road with a small culvert. This work covers approximately point oh three acres, is approximately seventeen linear feet and consisted of seven cubic yards of material, which is roughly three and a half pickup loads for a small dump truck. Those numbers were not in the application, but came about as a result of the filing of a form required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. My client met with Mr. Kevin Little from the Army Corps onsite on June ten, two thousand and twenty-two. Using aerial imagery and onsite observation of wetland indicators, these numbers were calculated and the required form was completed and sent to Mr. Little on June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. On June twenty-seven, Mr. Little indicated that the form Mr. Leroux provided looked good, in his words, and that he would be providing a letter to wrap up the work with the Army Corps. As was mentioned in the staff report, the pier or dock is not something that's subject to regulation by the Army Corps of Engineers. The application also seeks a permit for the small clearing of Russian olive trees, which are a noxious weed and shrubs in the area. The site plan that was submitted to you late last week, completed by Mr. Leroux's engineers at Morrison and Maryly and submitted to the planning office on July one, shows the calculated area to be point five two acres or twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two point two eight square feet. The application stated the clearing consists of approximately one acre. It was an approximation as the engineers were not able to go onto the site to meet the deadline set in the letter by the planning office. But this clarifies the site of the clearing is less than one acre and is point five two acres. Finally, the application seeks a permit for the pier or dock constructed of galvanized steel grate and pipe. There is the upper deck, as described in the staff report, and a lower deck connected by two steps. The decks are supported by steel piles driven into the riverbed four feet. The photos two, three and four submitted with the application depict the pier close and show the grate used, allowing the passage of water through the grate material. The structure was designed to withstand exposure to water. The applicant seeks to use their riverfront property for limited private recreation, such as fishing or potentially rafting, picnicking and enjoying the scenery. From the regulatory perspective, the two thousand and fifteen Park County Development Standards and Regulations apply, as you all know well. In making this decision about this permit, the board is guided by the purposes and objectives set forth in section five, the relevant factors also set forth in section five, and I have combined those in this discussion. You are to look at protecting life and health. The applicant designed the structure to pose limited danger to life and health of others. Now, in a flood event, it's unlikely the structure would be in use by any people on this private property. Keep in mind that the permit extends to the line of the flood zone boundary. Beyond that boundary, this permit and the application process is not applicable. I am concerned that some of the comments regarding sloughing or erosion are concerns about the road on the slope outside of the flood zone. So I ask you to take that into consideration carefully. Also, the removal of vegetation was predominantly of Russian olives, a noxious weed. It was not cleared to the bare ground or to dirt. And so keep that in mind when considering the erosion situations and comments that have been made. Potential collection of debris by a flood was reduced overall by the removal of the Russian olives and the shrubs. There is a possibility that the pier could collect debris, but the design with the slim poles and the grate is to minimize that risk. There is a risk that the pier could dislodge, but it is designed and built to be secure and has been watched closely during the recent high flows. It remains intact. As we know, the Bureau of Rec manages the river flows here. And while that does not mean that there cannot be a flood, it certainly mitigates the risk. The applicant acknowledged that there is a possibility that the structure could be swept downstream, but has used efforts to, in construction to prevent that. Flooding of the road would only impact the applicant as it's on the applicant's private property. You are to look whether and to seek to minimize expansion or expending of governmental funds. No government costs should result from this permit being granted. You are to minimize rescue efforts. The limited recreational use of the pier means that it's unlikely that government rescue vehicles would need to access the site. However, if they did, the road creates a better access to the riverfront in this situation. You are to minimize damage to public facilities and no public facilities would be impacted. You are to maintain a stable tax base. And there really is no change here, other than allowing a landowner more fully to use their existing private property. You are to minimize adverse impact on neighboring property. As stated, there is a possibility the structure could be swept downstream, but the applicant had that in mind during the construction and worked to minimize that possibility. The work clearing noxious weeds benefits all neighbors and the community. You are to minimize the impact on the floodplain. The erosion issue implies that the clearing took the land to the dirt and that, that's just not the case. The vegetation remains, but not Russian olives in the area depicted on the site plan. The floodplain will continue to function as a floodplain and overall, less debris should be caught in the floodplain than before. As noted, debris may be collected around the pier structure, but it was designed to have as little impact as possible. There is no proposed use that is environmentally incompatible. The necessity for a waterfront application and the availability of alternative locations, it really is a waterfront location is necessary for this proposed use. And compatibility with the land use plan. I think this is an important point. There is to be a balance between public and private use, protection of human needs and the use of these people's real property and protection of the environment. That balance is maintained with the use of limited recreation here. There is a statement in the report that it is reasonable to expect that the landowner wants to access the riverfront on their property, and that is the fact, that's true. The report continues that no other peers or docks exist, but I don't think that that is a reason not to grant this permit in this instance. There is no prohibition in the regulations other than going through this permit process for the pier. No prohibition from clearing noxious weeds like Russian olives. And there's no prohibition from installing a small car culvert or building a gravel road. The final point is that the The final point is that the water course here is not altered or relocated, and the applicant agrees with the staff's position. So, in summary, the applicant complied with the county's request to submit this application. The applicant has complied with the request of the Army Corps of Engineers. The pier is not regulated, and the application for the nationwide permit addresses any concerns that the Army Corps had about the fill. The letter dated June 17 is is not definitive that the fill is even in the waters of the U.S., but the applicant has gone the extra step to comply with that regardless. I believe there's no small construction stormwater permit necessary, as once it was calculated what the area is, it is .52 acres, so well under an acre. And overall, the impact of this structure is negligible. So the applicant respectfully requests that the permit be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Please state your name, please.
This is Landon Blanchard. You received my comments earlier in the in the email, I think, over the weekend, so thank you for receiving those. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the business that I own with my partner, Elise. We bought the business from my family last winter, I guess, winter of 2020. Wyoming River Trips has been in business for forty-four years now. We're looking to continue that. My main concern here was entrapment hazard within the navigable stretch of the river. This is below a considerable rapid at high water, not just a considerable rapid, but a rapid that has boils and eddylines where people often find themselves in the water, not so much on commercial raft trips, but specifically with rented equipment. So not just our business, but at least one other business, if not two or three other businesses in town, that are sending thousands of people out on the river each summer. This is a structure that is sitting in the river channel on the outside of a bend at high water that we've seen water flowing into. I think if the pier was constructed with thought of minimizing entrapment hazards, the downstream side of it would not have been made lower. So if some floats into that, not only are they floating into it, they actually get forced down if they were to go into this steel pylon. That's my my main concern. The other one is mainly just a process piece. I think we're all here as part of process. I would just love to see that when construction happens, it happens kind of in line with that process. If permitting is required, it should happen prior to the construction and not after the fact. I feel fairly strongly that these sort of things do happen, and then we come back after the fact. No one shows up these public comment periods, no one says anything, and then a permit is awarded, and I think it sets a bad precedent. Right now, there are more and more people developing and buying stretches of river, and I don't know if there's any good laws on the book to protect the navigable channel of the river. We deal with this as far as natural hazards go on the North Fork, which is shown all the time, but we're also dealing with hazards up there that are manmade, cables, power lines, things that are going in and getting swept into the river. And to add that to a stretch of river that typically has less erosion and a little bit less of the big peaks and falls as the North Fork does, to add this into a stretch of river that has thousands of people going down it each summer, we take roughly eight to 10,000 people down per summer. That's just our business. I would imagine that between the other two or three companies in town, they're probably pretty close, not to mention the increases in public use of this stretch of river. And if we continue to allow retroactive permitting for structures and buildings or whatever it might be that are happening within the navigable river channel of the corridor, I think we're going to slowly lose step with protecting this stretch of river, not just as a resource for the enjoyment of the public, but also as a place that is manageable within the acceptable amount of risk that we all take as, you know, river runners and people that are going down there on the river. So I respectfully would ask that this permit for this pier specifically not be granted. Thank you all.
I'm Tom Brown, represent East Yellowstone Chapter of Trout Unlimited with a bunch of folks from that chapter, also represent the Wyoming Council for Trout Unlimited. The gentleman that spoke before me was more eloquent than I am, but we float that river almost weekly, and the landowners have constructed new access down the hillside. We have no issue with that. That's their land. They could do whatever they want with it. The river bottom, they own in Wyoming. They don't own the water. State does. And so we've talked about the entrapment issue. There's what they describe as removal of Russian olives is, in fact, a three to four foot excavation into the hillside right along the riverbank. And that, and I've got photos that our T U members took, where that construction and excavation predated any application to do so. The previous speaker spoke well about the bad precedent that a pier into the waters of the state of Wyoming sets. To the best of my knowledge, this is the only pier extending into the water from the east gate of the Yellowstone Park to Willwood Dam. This is the first. There may have been a previous one that got washed away, but currently there's none that I'm aware of. I think it's sort of the camel's nose under the tent flap. If we, if y'all approve this after the fact, after a violation's been issued, then was to stop the second, and the third, and the fourth, and the fifth, and the tenth, and the fiftieth from doing the exact same thing, and then applying for it after the fact approval. I think it's an extremely dangerous precedent to set for this resource that Cody derives immense economic benefit from. So with that, I'd like any of the other members to speak their piece.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to make a comment. My name is Len Fortunato. I'm with Trout Unlimited also, and I oppose any approval of this project at this time. There were permits or processes we're permitting that would have allowed for this project for the for the applicant to have done correctly, and they were ignored. So that being the case, we have these permitting processes in in place so as to protect the general public, and there are lots of concerns about how this project proceeded and its effect, negative effect on the community. Even though the, as stated, that some of these areas are small, we know about the great erosionable effects of flooding. So you have a small area with, in a flooding period can turn into a real disaster. So again, we need to make sure that we have an engineered solution and not something that people can just go ahead and do and then ask for forgiveness later. So again, I disapprove of this approval, and it should be taken care of properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Elise Corino. I'm also with Wyoming River Trips, and I just wanted to also state that I oppose the pier specifically, what a private landowner does with their land, and even through the permitting process, I'm not opposed to. I believe in private land ownership, but building a pier in the river does set a precedent. Additionally, I don't think many people who are not on the river understand the hazards of putting something fixed or semi-fixed in the river channel, specifically below a rapid. We might run forty people down the river, that particular stretch of river, every day in the summer. I imagine the other companies also do. Now, you're talking about 120 different tourists, visitors, who directly impact our economy with their tax dollars, and also with where they eat, what they buy, where they shop. I would encourage you all to Google the Kern River and deaths on the Kern River. If we increase the hazards in the river, we increase the probability of loss of life on our river. One death will dramatically affect who wants to come here and what they hear about it. I think the recent flooding in Yellowstone actually is a good example of this. Just the idea that Cody might be underwater dramatically affected visitation. Hotels were down, restaurants were empty, businesses were no longer being visited, and the PCTC and State Tourism Department redirected funds from next year into this year's budget to try to change that, because the communities were being affected so heavily. So I encourage you all to think about that as we're thinking about fixed or semi-fixed objects in the river, specifically where those don't exist. My only other point is that access to the river does not require a pier. There are lots of ways to get your boat in the water without a dock, without a pier, and most everyone else is doing that commercially and recreationally.
I'm Harold Musser, and I sold that piece of property to John LaRue. When I was ten years old, I walked all over that river. I probably know it better than anybody in this room. There was no fishermen there unless you could get access to that. There were no floaters, no river people floating that river when I was a kid. The buffalo berries were down there, the Russian olive trees were down there, and I believe that the removal of the Russian olive trees is good. About five years ago, there was a program where they removed about 2,000 Russian olive trees on my, on Sage Creek. A couple of years ago, and for a few years, in fact, in a row, I believe it's Trout Unlimited that has contacted me about removing Russian olive trees on my property, which is, well, it's kind of out there by the Billings Clinic. I have about three quarters of a mile of river down there. And to enhance the neighborhood, I've allowed the removal of those Russian olive trees. Russian olive trees on my farm, I noticed when I removed them, I lost all the pheasants and the whitetail deer. So that wasn't good. So now I'm letting them grow again, so, you know, and of course, the city, they let theirs grow again. But what this really is about is is private property rights. I don't, I've known John LaRue a long time. I haven't known him to do anything that wasn't first class, from his houses that he's built to the ranch that he operated. And I know he didn't put a pier in there that is on the intention of harmony. Yep, everybody knows when it floods, you can get all kinds of, they had stuff going down Main Street of Red Lodge. You couldn't do a thing about it. You just let her go. There's rivers in this country, and a lot of them have piers, and that's very good. I may want to do something on my three quarters of a mile of river, and I would hope that I would, through my cooperation with Trout Unlimited and the other people, that they would also see that I'm not trying to destroy the neighborhood either. I just want to kind of use my property. So I've been in real estate for 48 years, and I can tell you this, the guy that buys the property, mortgages the property, pays pays the bank for 30 years, has more rights to that property than anybody else in this world. And I've bought lots of property, I've paid a lot of mortgages, and I've signed a lot of promissory notes, and I've paid off every single one of them. And I haven't done anything that would hurt anybody. So I encourage you, I fully support this. Where he has built that pier is on the edge of the river. Hopefully, the rafts aren't going along the edge of the river. They ought to stay out in the navigable part of the river, which is more the center of the river, and and keep away from the side and let John, you know, as he gets older, if he wants to drive his little side-by-side down there and sit on that pier and cast a line in the river, I just don't, I I think we're making a mountain out of a mole. And I encourage you to, yep, it's, John did it a little late. I don't think he's, he is not the type of guy to typically ask for forgiveness after he's done something. I'd probably be more like that. Sorry, officer, I was doing 100, you know, but I I respect what he wants to do. He'll keep it in good, and that is the least of the worries in this county when it comes to erosion. Thank you.
Any further comments? We're going to have to wrap things up or continue this at another time here shortly.
My name is Fred Brice. I'm the property owner at 110 Adams Lane, which is just south of John's. And I would agree with Harold. I think it's principally an issue of private property. I think there is legitimate concern for these other comments as well. I mean, we have to take care of our water resources, and we certainly don't want to impact public safety. And I think that might be a concern. I don't know if that's been commented on by an expert in terms of what positions rafts take as they go down the river. I think that might be worth a study or consideration, but I would support the development, and I think it's principally a private property issue. And I I also know John well, and what he's done to that property has been a real wonderful thing, and it's a beautiful bit of development he's done, if anything, that's helped Cody and probably helped its tax base. And I also, I get a chance to fly over that river quite a bit, and in looking down on that, I've never, I never noticed any of that. So from the air, I don't think any of that's an issue in terms of the beauty of the river or the surroundings. So I would support the continuation of the project and support John. Thank you.
Anyone else quickly?
I can speak really quickly to just like some years of professionalism in the outdoor industry and running rivers. I'm a professional guide. I work in Grand Canyon National Park as a guide down there. I've been a professional guide since I was 15. I'm certified in swift water rescue, all that stuff. I'm not talking, we're not talking about where boats should and shouldn't be. The nature of river running is managing risk. We do our best to manage risk as a professional company, as a commercial outfitter. That's why people come and pay us money to do it. I'm talking about the stuff that we can't control. I'm talking about the public that doesn't have that expertise, and I'm talking about an increased user base of river runners that go beyond the commercial stuff. We have seen more and more rafts, more and more paddle boards, more and more people on the river, more and more kayaks. It's not about where you're supposed to be in the river, it's where you can end up. And a pier on the outside of a corner at high flows below a rapid is where water is flushing to. So that would be my bit of expertise that I would throw out there. I don't think we need a study on that. I think it's pretty straightforward river running and risk management, so that would be my comment to that. Respectfully, thank you all.
Okay. There's any other public comments? We'll probably have to continue this at a different time, but are we done with public comments? Second? We moved and seconded to close the public hearing.
We moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Any, none? All those in favor? Okay, public hearing is closed.
I'm curious, a quick question to staff. When dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, how much weight do they put on safety for the public and well-being of the public when they issue a permit? Or do they actually come in and study the proposal and all that?
So I can't speak for the Corps of Engineers on what they do or do not evaluate. I do understand that they do not, this particular type of development, because it didn't impact Phil in particular, was the reason why it was excluded from their oversight. But other than that, I don't know what questions they ask as part of their reviews, whether public safety is part of it.
My, my big concern, I don't have any problem with the Russian olive or the road or any of that. But my big concern is the health, safety, and well-being of the park and the people. Because even though the property line goes to the center of the river, that water is public water and it gets a lot of use.
I understand. And I would encourage the board to address the three items separately when considering approval or denial.
Yes, Madam Chair, what, what are the issues I have? And I, I was a floater for many, many years. Usually, we are attracted by when we have high water. Get above some of the diversionary dams makes it a little more fun. But to put a dock on an outside bend, that's where you run into a problem. Because the river will take you to the outside. And if there's a structure that's underwater, like this dock, and it's only a little bit underwater, it's going to direct these rafts into that section and make it pretty dangerous. We're talking about public access that is sort of going through the private property. If that private property goes beyond that area, but we have the public going through there. So that becomes the black and white issue, you know, where, where this guy's property rights ends. And we have the public going through that private property. But to put a, a, a structure in an outside bend, that becomes, that becomes dangerous. And I've seen people go over like underground docks and diversionary dams that, and that really struggle to get out of them because of the, the undertones that come from something like that. So if it was on an inside port of the bend, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But on the outside, that's where it becomes dangerous, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but along those lines, you know, at that, at some point in time, when Mr. Blanchard talked about managing risks, if you're going to run this, you manage when you run it. If you, if things are high and you know that there's, there's always risks out, risks out there. At, at what point, again, what point in time do we, are we telling private property owners that they can't do something because it might impact something the public wants to do? That's, that's the struggle I have. I do have some issues with, with Mr. LaRue building this with, with, without any permits and coming back in and asking forgiveness. I do have some issues with that. But as far as what he's doing on his private property, I, I'm, I'm struggling with that one right now.
Madam Chair. I, I very much support private property rights with having a mile and a half of riverfront or creek through my property. And now for eighteen years owning riverfront property with my own dock at a place where there's over ten thousand people a day going by on the Kenai River up there. You never see piers out in the river like this on an outside port. I've never, not anything I've seen. And I do believe that it poses a specific danger to the public. I don't have a one bit of problem with the road, the vegetation clearing, Russian olive and things like that. But I do believe that we are setting a precedent, allowing something this significant into a river channel in a navigable part of that river where floaters do use it a lot. I'm going, going out on a limb here, but I would like to look at this permit. And I'm, I do want to mention, I don't like the after-the-fact part myself. However, for whatever reason, he's here today to go for a permit. And I would, I would support this floodplain permit with the exempt of the pier to, in as a condition for it be removed. At which point, if I understand this correctly, Joy, he would have to reapply if he chose to change it and bring it back within the high watermark, above the high watermark. I'm looking at the pier, and if he were, if it were turned and it was only right at the edge of the grass, if that would do him any good or not, I don't know, but that would be a separate permit, correct?
Correct. And it's possible that that would need to happen after a year has passed. I would have to confirm in the rules.
So if we were to act on this, can we act on part of it with the condition of the pier?
I don't understand. What, give me an example.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the floodplain permit with the exception, exception of the dock pier for, to be removed.
Different verification. So do you want, you want the dock removed?
Yep, as built, as is, as built as is.
You want it out?
Yeah, I don't think there's any way to move it to, yes.
I want it out.
Well, you know, my, my big concern.
Wait a second. Do you have a second for the motion, please?
I'll second first.
Okay, got, Mr. Ramo. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if you would, try me again on your.
If he wants to, to come back with a different style of dock.
Okay.
With, that would fall, that was my question, it would fall under a separate floodplain permit. I'm not saying he can't have it. I just don't like the one that he has put out into the river on an outside channel. If he wants to turn in and put it lesser outing, I may approve. But that, I mean, I find it funny that we're, as commissioners, all of a sudden experts in having to make the decision on private property of what's can and cannot be in the river. Army Corps doesn't do it. Bureau doesn't have that authority. That's to us. And in my opinion, my experience and some of the testimony, it is not a safe pier.
And again, Commissioner Teal, the reason you are given this authority is because you participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And by way of doing so, you have enacted rules that have been approved by the Flood Insurance Program. And therefore, you are responsible for.
Doesn't make me an expert.
I agree. But you can also require expert opinion, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm, I would, I'm still, I'm still hesitant to tell a private property owner what he can, what he can do. I would agree with him coming back. If he does come back, I would like to see engineered, some sort of engineer report on this, on this dock to help us say, again, I'm with Commissioner Teal, I'm not an expert. The flooding part, I'm not, I'm, I'm not even thinking about the flooding part. I don't think that's an issue. I think that the pier appears to be the issue with everybody. But if we're going to go down that road, I would like some sort of engineer's, you know, design on that to show us that, yes, this will work or it won't work.
That's your vote.
Joy, is the, is the floodplain permit required if the pier is removed?
They still need the permit for the road grading and the vegetation clearing.
I just want to make sure, okay, I just want to make sure that they, we could do.
That's why I was hoping you would address them as three separate approvals.
The violation coming later, but we'll deal with this right now as far as the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just one quick comment along the line with Lee's talk about it. I'm a, I'm very much a firm believer in private property rights. And landowner property, private property goes to the channel of the river. But you also have an obligation to the general public that access the river, which is public water. And I do believe that very, very much appreciate the guys.
Any further comments on the motion on the floor?
Madam Chair, can, can we get a repeat of the motion? I just want to be clear, so.
To approve the floodplain permit for the vegetation and road development minus the pit dock, dock slash pier.
And is there a condition?
Condition for it to be removed. Good calling.
Everybody understands the motion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Question passes three to one. Okay, then we have the issue of the violation. So we've taken care of the pier in that motion and the floodplain permit at this time.
Are we acting on the violation right now?
We, I don't know if that's part of the.
If you wish to act on the violation, I mean, a notice of violation was sent. In response to that, he produced this permit application to come into compliance.
What's the pleasure of the board to do that at a later date?
I mean, I don't have to make a motion, but I.
Later date, okay? We'll deal with the violation of timing.
It's stated here.
Okay.
Any fire, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
It was our understanding from the letter violation, correcting the violation was paying the fee and submitting the application. It was not clear that there are any other impacts with violation and that was made in the conference. So coming here with the application, paying the fee for the investigation, that was the only issues raised to the landlord in the letter. So we are aware of any sort of violations of the law. And certainly object to that. Further information about, you know, I think that's.
Madam Chair, I'll just provide you some of the contents of the letter of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-two that was sent to Mr., or the John F. LaRue Revocable Trust. We indicated that there was a violation. There was a category A for grading, category B for unpermitted development in the floodplain for an accessory structure, which is the dock. And also, I guess we included the grading in the road. So each of these violation categories identified what the violation was. And it also identified within the end of this letter, the penalty for violations to the standards. Now, note that Chapter Four, Section One D addresses penalties. The penalty for any violation of any provision of the zoning rule shall be a fine of not more than the amount set by statute, which is currently seven hundred and fifty dollars per day for each violation. It says, "When other means of enforcement have failed or in cases warranting immediate abatement, the county attorney is authorized to pursue additional legal remedies." Chapter One, Section Eight D provides for an investigation fee. "In all cases where the planning staff determines through a complaint, record checking, or inspection that a building construction or other land development activity has taken place prior to the issuance of a permit or approval, the applicant shall pay an investigation fee surcharge before the permit or approval will be issued." So we have addressed both the penalties and the investigation fee. They have mentioned the investigation fee. That's what they're talking about. My letter indicated a corrective action and time limit for violations A and B. Within thirty days of the date of this notice, the property owners must submit the following to the Planning and Zoning Department: A, evidence of compliance, or B, a floodplain development permit application and fee. In addition to the permit application fee, they must remit a payment of one hundred and fifty dollar investigation fee associated with notice of the violation. Typically, if an individual does not come into compliance, then we would send a notice of violation with consideration of fines or penalties, which would come before you. I don't know that that prevents you from proceeding with consideration of penalties on your own accord because a violation did occur. So you may choose to set that consideration at a different time. You may wish to seek counsel.
Let's check with counsel, follow up with paperwork, and make sure what was, what was provided and what the follow-through could be. If there's any reason to follow through on violation, we'll certainly be in touch.
Do you have a resolution number?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're way off schedule.
We have to stay up for class?
Our executive session was scheduled for eleven-thirty.
Well, you fell way behind.
I did, I did. Messed that one up. I don't know if he's still here, or we'll do that later. Colleen, do you want to do the eleven forty-five real quick?
So when we talked about our insurance, our stop-loss, I think on all of them. In the motions that day, we made a motion to not participate in the health insurance program until later date. And then we renewed the stop-loss carrier. At that time, we should have also renewed our premiums. I thought we did. I don't know if I missed it in the motion. I went back and listened. And so just to clear up everything, I would like for, I would like, I would like for the board to approve our health insurance premiums at the rates we have left.
Madam Chair, so move.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the health insurance premiums to remain the same as last year. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Colleen, you missed your opportunity. You should have, with everyone wanting to get to lunch in the back team, you should have just slid in that. Should have slid in the incentive.
Wait a second.
Too late.
Yeah, let's get her.
Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session.
Second.
So moved and seconded for executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Within 30 days of the date of this notice, the property owners must submit the following to the Planning and Zoning Department. A, evidence of compliance, or B, a floodplain development permit application and fee. In addition to the permit application fee, they must remit a payment of $150 investigation fee associated with notice of the violation. Typically, if an individual does not come into compliance, then we would send a notice of violation with consideration of fines or penalties, which would come before you. I don't know that that prevents you from proceeding with consideration of penalties on your own accord because a violation did occur. So you may choose to set that consideration at a different time. You may wish to see counsel.
Let's check with counsel, follow up with the paperwork and make sure what was, what was provided and what the follow through could be. If there's any reason to follow through on violation, we'll certainly be in touch.
Do you have a resolution number?
Thank you.
2022-63.
Thank you. Okay. We're way off schedule.
We have to stay up for class?
Our executive session was scheduled for 11:30.
Well, you fell way behind.
I did. I did. Messed that one up. I don't know if he's still here or if we'll do that later. Colleen, do you want to do the 11:45 real quick?
That will take two minutes. So when we talked about our insurance, our stop loss, I think on all of them. In the motions that day, we made a motion to not participate in the health program until later date. And then we renewed the stop loss carrier. At that time, we should have also renewed our premiums. I thought we did. I don't know if I missed it in the motion. I went back and listened. And so just to clear up everything, I would like for. I would like, I would like for the board to approve our health insurance premiums at the rates we had last.
Madam Chair, so move seconds.
I moved it seconded to approve the health insurance premiums to remain the same as last year. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Colleen, you missed your opportunity. You should have, with everyone wanting to get to lunch in the back team, should have just slid in that. Should have slid in the incentive.
Wait a second.
Too late.
Yeah, let's get her.
Madam Chair, I'm going to executive session.
Second.
So moved it seconded for executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it's time to go.
Always, always got to tend to some of the fourth by the length of the line at the bar here. Last year with nobody there, you walk up and get a drink and there you water this year you had a way to walk. No, they had plenty, plenty of, just a lot of people wanting to drink.
Yeah, Lauren said he got there at seven thirty. There was a line of people already at the dollar.
Oh geez.
You have good seats though.
Good. I think we can get going if everybody's ready. First thing on our agenda this afternoon, are we on? Okay. Discussion of the Welcome Home Wyoming program. Remember we looked at that or listened to them a couple of weeks ago. They had a resolution that they would like us to do. I think you all received some background information that Molly did while I was gone and into some of the banking thoughts. So what's the thoughts from the board?
And question more than a thought. Thanks Molly for doing the research. I did a little bit myself, not maybe this isn't as you did, but some of the kids talked to some of the same people and they said that you've already acquired and I blamed it on Dossie putting up to it, but congratulations. My question, I guess above all is why are we, why is this, does this program require our resolutions for them to have in Park County? Second part of that question is with the Cheyenne Housing Authority, they already have a presence in Park County on rental assistance. Is that something totally different and was that done under resolution in the past?
I have no idea. I do know they do it, but I don't know if it was done under resolution or not. And she did mention that on the program. She did say that they did rental assistance here, that there were people that they worked with in.
Does anybody know the reason why they require the resolution for, for them to participate in Park County under the, under the loan process?
Why the requirement? No, it may be similar to W C D A and those types of programs that all require each county to agree to it. Yes, sir.
I've had some of the same questions that Commissioner Teal did, but also and I look at what the, if, where we, where would we be harmed by approving it? That's.
And I agree, Madam Chair, my question Lee is from what, and Molly could probably help answer some of this, but from what I understand, they have a principal lender. Local banks don't generally, they can, but they don't generally loan. They farm their loans out. And I don't believe all banks, they have certain prime lenders that they go to and they have to, or, and, and am I wrong? So under this program, they all have to go through this prime poor lender and are, are all banks? Is it available to all banks regardless?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm reading the, excuse me, but reading the stuff we got from Pinnacle Bank, that was my take on.
But, and then there's a whole eligibility level of who's eligible for this program. It's not just anybody.
As long as all lenders are available to use the program, I have no problem, even though it does set it. I mean, we're kind of saying yes, but it's to a specific private lender ultimately. And we're more or less endorsing that by a resolution and, and I don't have a problem with that. If you don't want to participate, you don't have to. But if it can help, I guess I support it. I still don't understand the reason.
Yeah, but I mean, in this day and age, the idea of a local bank, we don't have local banks.
Right. That's about right. That's about right. Thoughts, Scott?
I'm I think it's a great program. I mean, if it's about available someone to be able to purchase a home, I think you know, the name Cheyenne Housing Authority is puts a question there, but as far as using, I'm sure federal dollars to go through the housing authority, but they need a resolution of some kind. So so I'm in support of passing this resolution and hopefully somebody in Park County will be able to use it.
Is there a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
And just quick. It's been moved and seconded to the resolution as presented.
The only question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is our has our county attorney looked at this thoroughly and there's far as he can see, there's no strings attached anywhere?
He has looked at it. I know Molly talked to him about it too. He said it's come up years ago. They may not have been as widely known around the state at that time. And maybe they changed a little bit of wording in the resolution. I'm not sure. He did look at it. He didn't have any major concerns. Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Are you none of those in favor?
Aye.
Damn right.
Okay. And you'll get a copy for us to sign or to design. Okay. Well, I guess we have a few minutes.
Got this agenda way ahead scheduled now.
Snark down lunch. Yeah, we can take the rest of our lunch at this point. Oh my, is he?
There he is. Attention on.
You think you got back?
Yes. Great place. Yeah, to get a chance to go, go. Yep. Okay. The next thing on our agenda, we're going to jump a little bit early, but law enforcement for Cook City, Montana.
Okay. A little background story on this. About a week and a half ago, on the weekend, we had a call and fight up there. Carbine County, Montana called us to go up there because they couldn't get there in a kind of timely fat manner. So they called us to send a couple of people up there. The lieutenant, patrol lieutenant was on the ball saying, we can't, we have no authority whatsoever up there. So that started the ball rolling. The next morning I called their sheriff up there in Carbine County and said, he was very thankful because he was going to call me and said, you know, maybe we need to start looking at how, how do we do this, you know? They don't have the manpower to put a guy up there, you know, for the next year and a half, two years, what service take? And so we were discussing what they have the responses up there as far as emergency type responses. They don't have a lot of, certainly that could change in one hour and a minute. That's there. So with that said, after talking to him for several times that that day, I got I got a hold of, got well, me getting in touch with the governor's office. They called immediately, but then all of a sudden homeland security wanted to get involved and come to find out the way these states work now is their homeland security will make reference or make requests from ours or vice versa for assistance in an emergency situation. And because both governors have signed a declaration of disaster, emergency declaration for the state, it jumps us right into force already. So there's some wheels already turning down there. Obviously some hurdles, legal hurdles we got to cross as far as jurisdictional. One thing came to light is okay, we get, we had jurisdiction out. Are we breaking into extradition laws now by bringing them from Montana back somewhere to here where they can take them back up around Montana? Both AGs from both states says, no, it's not an issue. It's no different than if they were to arrest people up there and then house them here and then go back and rain them up there. So the legal team seemed to have ironed that out and made a ruling on that. So they're moving forward and this is all tentatively to come up with some kind of agreement where we possibly can inter provide law enforcement other than emergency response capability only. Obviously Brian Scorsese, we have been involved in that as well. And so right now the foundation, the map, the roadwork is being in place to see if this fees more, how we would do it and if we would. So certainly that would be coming back to this board before we enter into the state. And it sounds like the agreement is actually entered into between states. So not actually the sheriff's office and ours. It would require every single one of our guys to be sworn as a deputy for Park County. So once they cross that line in the Park County, it would fall under their authority, it would fall under their liability. Of course, we want Brian's opinion, make sure we're right on that. So we're not, we're not out there actively trying to go and force a law. We're simply there. I mean, Montana citizens, I think we have the right to share some kind of responsibility to help that until that that bridge is gapped, you know, they get that line back in. So like I did this with Brian to get a little bit, I mean, Brian's a little nervous about it, but he understands. Yeah. And understandably so. That's just like he said, that the states are out to protect themselves where Brian's job is to protect the county. So any kind of, as soon as they get any kind of draft, they're going to send it to Brian or send it to me to get to Brian. We're all on the same list together. And there's supposed to be another conference called Sometime this week. So Chair wanted to be on there, so we wanted to sit in that. So that'd be good too. It's just, it's just all in the what can we do? But these, these, it's not an MOU, but similar to an MOU, but they have already lined out as matter of in certain language, like where reimbursement, stuff like that, how that would go.
Yeah.
An end date. So most of these things have an end date, you know, but on this one, they say they would have to be basically the end date is after the event is over, meaning that road is reopened. Which we all know can take, you know, it's not long. But anyway, that's just, we're in a, we're in a process of what can you, that's about it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Scott and Andy, if you guys, you guys have a way, maybe you mentioned this earlier to anyone listening, but do you have a way of an anticipation of of manpower possibly needed? I know that maybe your incidents up there are very, very limited, but there is going to be a certain number of incidents. And is it going to be, is that going to be a major consideration on on, do we have folks to do it?
So I talked about the sheriff, the sheriff up there. Our intent would be in something bigger just to get there and stabilize. We're also going to be meeting with the, oh, I said Carbine County, where I'm sorry, Park County.
Park County.
The Carbine County, because they're not far away further than we are. So if we can jump in there and stabilize it, we just, if they get there, we back off, they do whatever rest or containment and take them and leave. So there is that that part of the issue we're looking at is how we and then if I tell you my bigger concern is is not a law enforcement issue, but if you have a wildfire or some fire down and we're going to have to get in there and help that back. And so there's, there's going to be some major discussions going on. What happens if we start getting fire danger up there and see something of that nature? And I think that's where the best thing we can do is have Carbine County involved in ours to learn stabilizing force until they can take it over.
So I'm following Chair. So you, you were just anticipating it to be on an on-call incident and no patrol at all?
No. And so in fact, what the agreement says would be on-call or emergency call based on. And I think there could be some exceptions to that, certainly if it's, it's unknown, which that's half our job is unknown. You get that call of a something suspicious and then you all have breaks too. So we would have to have some kind of heavyweight with that too. And I think a lot of that's going to be respire or rely on our, our dispatch and deputies really grilling the caller, what's going on and try to get as much accurate information we can. The other thing I've talked to the sheriff about is do they have maybe the fire department or somebody up there who's not law enforcement trained that can maybe size up the stuff better for us? And so that's a lot of the stuff we have to work on.
Yes, Madam Chair, the response time for us to go up to Cook City, what was that?
It would depend on the environment and the time, you know, on a good day, in the middle of the day, no hazards. I mean, you could do it pretty quick. I mean, and again, you know, right now if it's open with traffic and stuff, that's always an issue because there's very little passing up there. So it, it, it could vary anywhere from an hour and a half to three or four hours. Like if we have to mobilize a snow team, you know, something going in the winter, that could take a lot longer.
But for a bar fight, that's usually done by.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And that's what happened in this case. It was kind of resolved, but they were not real happy because they thought somebody was responding.
Has there been any discussion with maybe Carbine County or Park County, a temporary housing up there for law enforcement or place, maybe just put a deputy there?
Yeah, I think the sheriff about of Park County is that's something they're looking into. And I think their commissioners are looking at maybe doing something, increasing somewhere and get somebody up in there. Or, and I was going to bring up the Sheriff McQuillan up there and in Carbine about, you know, maybe they can, maybe they can work on doing with man in that position. I mean, certainly we would want to manage. But if they had a, maybe they could get some quarters up there where they can have deputies, you know, routinely up there on call or up there patrolling or wherever. So it's just a lot of ironing out the stuff right now to figure out how we can help them out.
Well, the issue would be detention though, you know, detain somebody on a tent or something.
When we're talking about it, I realized that most of this is law enforcement, but are, is there any discussion on the medical too, or have they got all that covered there?
Well, I think medical is not an issue right there. They have their own medical. One of, one of the unique things that's happened here is so they have an MOU, the park service for law enforcement.
Right.
Parks service can come down from the northeast gate and they have that northeast ambulance, some of that there. But with the road being down, the park has shut it down and just pulled all their people out.
Okay. So there's nothing right now. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions as this moves forward? Come to mind?
That was my, Madam Chair, my question was whether they had an MOU or a mutual aid agreement with park service because of that discussion we had up there, they, because they do have a form of law enforcement still on the, on the silver date. And I don't know to what extent they, if they're packing or if they're just in patrolling, but there was discussion up there with the Cook City residents on the last week for that meeting I was up there. They were, their presence is still there. Some of the people go into the park and do whatever.
That's something we'll look into. It's when I talked to Sheriff there, he said that they were looking to relocate and reallocate those because they have a pretty hard and fast closed gate up there. And I made him, they might keep one there or something. They were talking about reallocating all those people. And I have not talked to the sheriff for a week, you know, so I don't know what they've done on his end, but certainly I'll get back to him this week.
If you let me know when the call is.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Just writing on Scott's cocktails. Public health was involved during this most recent emergency. We've assisted Park County up there a couple of times with Cook City. This time it was for water samples. We got permission from municipal app to just run those down there and get them water samples to ensure that they serve a safe water. So there's a little bit of overlap in.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, we might look at how the overall agreement looks and what all we're allowed to do or can do for them.
Yeah, they, they were tentatively, hope they have it by Friday, the past Friday. Sure, here, the holidays. Get that ball rolling this week.
Okay.
So we're not stuck in an emergency, wondering what to do.
Yeah, well, at least we got through the holiday weekend. So.
Okay. So I was wondering about just having some go down up there when we didn't have anything in place.
And, and we were busy here. So, okay. Okay. Thank you for the update and thanks for the work.
Hammer.
Mr. Hammer, how you doing with that?
Fourth, everybody.
I was just so, so happy.
Everything went off without hitch, did it?
For the most part.
Didn't get mugged or anything?
Huh. Public hearing. So I guess we can go ahead if you would like to. Our next thing is FY twenty-three Transportation Alternatives Road Program.
All right. So what I have here for you today is basically the next step. We finished our fiscal year twenty tap. Deals ability study. And at this point, we're applying for funds to design for the, for the Powell bike and pedestrian facilities. This is the the TAP program is basically the nine point five one percent is Park County and then the rest is, is a funded by the TAP program. So that's what this resolution is that I bring into you today is to set aside a minimum of twenty eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for our portion, our nine point five one percent local cash match for FY twenty-three.
Is that, does that amount include a contribution from Powell that they agreed to kick in?
Um, no, that would be kind of completely separate as far as since, since they're not co-applicants with us, it's our responsibility to set aside in our budget, the amount, the nine point five one.
Probably do plan on using.
We could apply that to our twenty five thirty, but that's completely separate from what we're agreeing.
Separate from this resolution, but there will be a little bit of money coming in from the city of.
Other thoughts, questions?
Where do we pull this money from?
What is the timeframe?
So we've already basically submitted our application to be reviewed and then we're officially going to submit it probably this week. That's why we kept on, you know, fifteenth is the deadline. So we would like to have this.
Does the check have to go with it?
No.
Oh, okay.
All we have to do is have a line item in the budget for.
Okay. All right. So it can be in either hours in some form or in public works in the new budget.
We need to include that into our new budget. In the next line item.
But we have a discussion coming up here.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I move to approve a resolution number, whatever for tap. And allow the chair to sign.
And the amount of the twenty eight thousand.
The amount of twenty eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollar local match.
Second now.
Okay. Just received a note too, that it is possible to be decided the county road fund. So it could come out of there too. Have a motion in a second to approve in the amount of twenty eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Any further discussion? None of those in favor?
Thank you.
So Colleen just made a note on that one, but it could be, so it can go either budget or county road fund. What did he say about this? So, yeah. Looks like some new digital stuff. I think so. I just received some information from the assessor that I was, it was budget related. So I was kind of figuring out if we needed to add that at this point to the discussion too, but let's go ahead with what you have and then we'll talk about this. Yeah, he did. And then he just, so you want to get, I guess, come back up. That'd be great. Thanks. Do you want to get, I guess, come back up? That'd be great. Thanks. I didn't do it. No, no, some one of the other neighbors did.
Wasn't pretty.
Trash pile around. We're going to get into the budget discussion, so we wanted to go ahead and, if you want to have a seat too, Colleen will be with us in just a second. You guys want to see all of the budget at this point where we're ending before it gets advertised with what Colleen's going to go through, or are the numbers okay to just hear them?
I can, I can use you on it too. I don't even see it.
We're okay. I want to explain this real quick.
Yeah, um, that's from Eagles. They're the ones who do our aerial photos, do the fly that the Department of Revenue pays. At one time I was going to ask you guys for close to three hundred thousand to finish off what they didn't do. But I managed to get a bunch out of the Department of Revenue. All of a sudden they came up with, uh, some extra square miles and I jumped on it. So we got all of Clark now. I've got all of the north floor to the border to the Shoshone Forest and I wanted that upper south fork. I wanted Crandall and stuff too, but I mean, we can take two days up there and actually review it manually. But I thought the upper south fork was a pretty good deal. They have a lot of construction going on and anytime they put up a building now, it's going to flash up and we're going to have it, you know?
Okay, and so that's what that total amount is?
That's what, and so now we're at like twelve thousand bucks.
So I gotta hurry and get my stuff done.
You do.
Big brother's watching.
Okay, so anyways, and for your discussions, let me in on the mill levy discussion. If you're thinking about reducing that, I have some other information you want, you probably are going to want to consider. If you go in that direction.
Okay, that's true, and we're going to have that discussion, so we'll see how this goes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're just waiting on Steve.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess I would say with the mill level discussion, we really need going to treasurer because that affects every special district in this county.
If we lower ours from twelve to eleven.
We still have to redo, all of the tax assessments will have to be redone.
Yeah.
From what I was understanding, because it would only take out of us, it wouldn't take out of anyone else.
Right.
I don't know. She just said it would be a nightmare.
I thought Pat just said they just had to be reprinted with that lesser amount.
Yeah, because, Madam Chair, unless we, unless we, unless the special, yeah, unless the special districts, what we're, what we would be talking about is only what the county collects. It'd be in, in that, we could get into that whole more, more of that discussion because there's some, some special districts. We can, we can lower their mills if we want to, so, but right now.
What, what did Barb say about?
Where Molly went to get her.
Yeah.
So.
A lot of, there'll be a lot of back mineral adjustments.
I don't understand that. I guess I need more explanation.
Yeah, it's collection going forward instead of.
Just according to Barb, it sounds really easy, but it's a pretty difficult situation up there, but.
Okay, Molly went to get her, so we'll see what she says, but.
We're having a levy discussion then.
Apparently, a little bit of, of an homework. Well, and, and maybe let's do the budget first and then decide how much farther we want to go. Does that work? Okay. Hi, sure.
Oz, I didn't know. If you wanted to just tell them or you want to show it?
Well, what can it or?
We said we can talk about it. I guess everybody agreed. They've seen the numbers.
I think we got the, they're having trouble balancing, so I couldn't get in the system to update exactly what we got the carryover pretty much figured from Barb's and we're right now about four hundred, ten thousand to the good. I've got most, I went in and put all the salaries exact.
Okay.
And so everything is pretty.
Help money come in?
Yes. It came in, we estimated one point nine, something, we got two point three.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, this, under the salaries that included the sheriff's.
Sheriff.
All of the changes.
The sheriff's additional, I mean, yes, yeah, okay.
Did you add the dispatcher?
The library had an additional. Oh, they weren't, they weren't as part of it.
And museum board.
Museum was.
Right. What other conversations did we have? Our thoughts to make sure.
One thing I did get from the museum was a bid on their copier.
Yes.
We're going to place, and it's with trade in thirty-two ninety-five.
With the museum?
Yes.
They've, yes, they've already had to do it because the copier quit. So they needed that much put back in their budget for next year to cover what they were going to use that money for. Forward with the parks and stuff, so.
So I would need to add this into their budget.
That's my understanding of the discussion we had with, with the museum board. There was, oh, well, Pat's thing, I guess.
You want, you want this back?
Well, if we wanted, what are your thoughts on getting the south fork filmed for that amount of money?
You know, I mean, it's, I mean, for twelve thousand dollars, it's probably worth it.
That, wait, or, excuse me, Mr. Teal, what was the total on?
Twelve thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars fifteen, fifty cents.
The assessor's budget. If we decide we want to do it, it would be an additional, be in the assessor's budget for some aerial scanning.
Came up in our discussions in the clerk's office was the warm insurance with the IT stuff.
Yes.
And I, I thought we had a little bit longer to do, but I think we have two years to compile this.
Okay.
And I think our insurance is pretty important to keep.
So for three hundred thousand you mentioned this morning? Yes, sir.
What's, what's the ballpark figure going to be?
Well, that's the thing. We have no idea. Mike hasn't even begun to work on it. So we thought with this amount of money left, we should at least throw three hundred thousand towards it this year. We could be looking at another five hundred thousand next year. We have no idea what the cost of this is.
Eight hundred thousand dollars over two years?
Possibly. I mean, we have no idea.
No, sure, I mean, so here's the, here's the. Here's the question I have is if, if we have no idea, where are we, where are we allocating money? Why we just, why can't we just adjust if we have to pay it, we pay it if it comes from reserves?
We can always do that.
I, that's where I'm, I mean, it doesn't, it's, it's, it doesn't really matter to me where the money is parked. If you're thinking we need to park it to protect it, maybe so, but I think looking at our reserves.
But, but we, we decided we have four hundred thousand might be a good number over two years to complete the whole project. So if we allocate that money for the whole project, that means we're going to have it for that project as a carryover into the next year. It's, it's six dozen.
Six dozen half of it. You're a numbers guy. That kind of makes me scared.
It's just, it would be nice to have the money put there.
Earmark.
Earmark.
To make ourselves do it because we have to do it.
Yeah, it's just a long process, but it has to be paid for.
Well, Madam Chair, why don't we put the difference to put two hundred in?
It's up to the board.
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then there's the twelve that needs to go to the assessment.
Twelve, eight, one, eight, fifty. What?
Mr. McDonald's.
That was coming out of us.
Well, well, it can, it can come out of county road or it can come out of public courts or it can come out of ours.
Madam Chair, uh, under fourteen forty-two Professional Engineering Services, Services. Uh, the current budget has, uh, five thousand in it. I mean, that's where it would. Am I wrong?
No, I just don't know what else he might have that earmarked for. He was talking about the Willwood. He was talking about a couple of different proposals, so.
Yeah, so they bring that up to thirty-three five.
I'm fine with that too.
So, under fourteen forty-two in, county engineer. Uh, near the bottom is Professional Engineering Services, currently budget of five thousand, so we'll add twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to that by night.
That is for the TAP.
The annoying thing, there was an email from Brian Edwards on the HVAC controllers. I didn't know.
We had a little bit of that discussion this morning and some of that is our money, um, that we've talked about. And there were some, there's controller money already should be rolling over, basically. But that amount was like, they were thinking only fifty to seventy-five percent of what was going to be needed.
Hundred and ten thousand, that's here, is what we have built into capital, uh, building and ground capital improvements, HVAC controllers. Which is, it covers a little less than half.
Yeah. At least from the last conversation that we had. So do we need to put another hundred thousand there in order to cover that? Thinking that the HVAC itself will still be in the ARP money? That would just be controlled.
I would see, I mean, we know that's coming, right? And that, yeah, I would, I would say so.
Extra hundred for the HVAC.
The controllers.
Controllers.
Right. Two different.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I may have missed. They have it split in the capital improvements between they have complex and courthouse. A hundred and ten in one, a hundred in the other.
Did we? Well, we have to do both, don't we?
Right, but that's two hundred and ten and more, so I still think a hundred would be.
I don't think it's going to hurt to have it there because we haven't got the new numbers.
Just add a hundred feet to one of those, probably the courthouse one.
Courthouse because of public works.
He's not the, that four hundred and some odd thousand all the way.
You're done.
We just.
That didn't take long. And we, our letter from the state on public health, we're covered there with what they've determined they are going to do with their percentage on salaries in that department.
Yeah, Bill, good on.
Okay. All right. What else was hanging out there?
Oh, we needed to answer the question on the per diem for.
Oh, for the coroner's office. Do we have per diem in other departments in the county?
No.
Oh, it's like, um.
This is different per diem, but this is.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Am I wrong or was, I thought my understanding of that request that we settled that basically about half of what he wanted because we're going to leave, that was from January from the new, new coroner Ford, who may or may not choose, but the money would be there if he needed it. We do not need it between now and then. Between now and January.
Yeah, we wanted clarification because we, we heard it both ways, so we just want clarification on how that money was received.
So if we're just putting twenty thousand into the budget to possibly be used starting in January, depending on what per diem decision may be made by the new coroner, then we don't have to make that decision right now, do we, as far as the per diem amount? Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's not starting till January?
No, I understood. We have to make a decision on whether to put it there or not.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it was my understanding that's where we put it.
Well, it's carved in stone and we all in agreement that we want to do it for this. I think it's wasting money.
I really want to hear the conversation with the new coroner and today's world and find out.
From at this point, you know, admittedly, the corner position has evolved into something more than it's ever been, but Tim's outgoing. We got a new person coming in and the idea of, you know, per diem might be a good idea, but for right now, we don't know what they're going to do.
Well, and I think that's the thought of just putting some money in that budget in case, because I, I paid my guys on call, um, was required to actually. But to keep them on call and not be able to leave the area, it is a value.
Well, but yeah, I mean, what Tim was talking about was like have three deputy coroners.
Right, no.
Sort of on call. Well, if you have three, surely you can find one.
One on call at a time, yeah.
Yeah.
They're guaranteed to be here because I, I have four guys working for me and there were weekends I all wanted to go on.
I don't know. I mean, we, we've gone for a lot of years without it. We've got a brand new building down there. I, personally, I'd like to wait till you get the new coroner.
Well, we're not talking about doing anything with it right now except parking some money in that budget in case the new coroner does want to do that.
If that is the case, you can do a budget amendment.
Okay. That's fine too.
Any new coroner coming in is going to say, yeah, I want to find out, so just in case, so I'm sure they'll be in, in favor of it. Um, but, uh, you know, like what Joe was saying, you don't think we need it. Um, if we're just stashing away twenty thousand dollars.
We got twenty thousand dollars stashed away, put it in our reserve.
If we need a per diem, couldn't we do a budget resolution after?
We can do that anytime we need to. So do you want to wait?
Yep, well, I think the point is, is we've got a new person coming in. How do they want to run shop and how do they want to respond to the needs of our county? So I think we need to hear from the, the new coroner before we do something.
I'm okay with.
All right, we'll just leave that out then.
So no, it won't be the full twenty thousand because there is a pay in there for deputy coroners when they go on calls, two hundred per call.
Oh, a part of that's in there. Okay, I'll just adjust that one.
Just back to what it was last year.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else? That we left?
I've been done by this afternoon.
He didn't comment. Okay.
Possibility.
So with what we just did with a few things, we're almost out of wash.
We're going to be very close.
Okay. All right, so let's, if anybody doesn't mind taking two or three minutes, let's talk about the mill thing. If we were to do that, Steve and I've had the discussion that that mill, if we went from twelve to eleven, is worth about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That the county would not be receiving in the next year. So tell us what, how that works, Barb, if it's our mill and that's the only one we affect.
It would affect all the property owners and the minerals, so you don't really have to, well. But basically, we would, the county would be off eight hundred thousand, not anybody else, not the special districts or anything like that.
Right.
Um, after talking to Pat, um, you know, we could wait till August. You know, to honestly see, one of my concerns is the economy right now. You look at the, all the places downtown, they're half empty. We don't know how, you know, so effective the county, our sales and use, all of that. So I'd be cautious on the statistics and make sure you heard that, so now that we just pushed.
Yeah.
And it, it's not just, you know, so when the mineral bills come in, they're collecting monthly, that's going to be really hard because now we're going to have to pack. You know, all of that, so keep that in mind that, you know, that bill is, even though it's our job, we'll do it, but it's, it'll affect a lot. And it's about what Chad say about twelve dollars maybe a household, I mean.
On the, on the low level household, yes.
But we're also anticipating that, right, so. So we'll do what you guys want, but it is about eight hundred thousand. It would come out.
Any other concerns right now or you want to wait and see where we come?
Almost nine hundred.
I can, I can make a decision now. I'm, I'm not in favor of it. I mean, from what Pat has told us, the numbers he's given us, relief to the average taxpayer homeowner is not much. And my crystal ball is telling me that this year is a very good year for Park County. We've got additional revenue, we have the federal money. Easiest budget I've ever. And my crystal ball is telling me that this year is a very good year for our county, we've got additional revenue, we have the federal money, easiest budget I've ever done. But moving forward, I think it's gonna be pretty bleak here the next couple of years, in my opinion.
Any other thoughts right now, you want to wait till August, and we have to set it in August anyway, so.
Yeah.
We can think about it between now and then, and we'll have some updated reports and. Okay. Okay. August. Okay. What else?
Four questions today.
I know they're trying to raise the minimum or the income level on that property we're needing for next year. So that might help someone, I know that Sandy pushed out right away to change the minimum or the income level and the asset level of the property. So if that went through, it might help our group. Not sure.
There's also a bill they're doing to up the veteran's exception.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on to help the community, so we might want to wait on that, but that won't close.
We won't know.
Right. In time.
Good.
Madam Chair, I think one of the things, so on is the prevention grant. So, we have the money, or she spends the money, then, well, code regional, let her spend the money. Now that code regional is not involved, is she gonna be this money out of pocket until we pay her back? Who's, who's the middleman here now?
We haven't approved the contract yet. She's supposed to be bringing that in, I haven't seen it yet.
And I thought it was due July one.
I don't know that for sure, but I will.
Well, I guess that, that was our question, the middleman on this now, because it's gonna be her out in forty-five thousand dollars a month out of her own pockets, until she gives us all the invoices and we reimburse her. Because it's a reimbursable grant, it is not a upfront grant.
At this point, we actually reimburse after we get the money from the state.
From the state, yeah.
Because we had such trouble getting it.
Okay, let me talk to her and see what we can.
Yeah, so.
I should have had that by now, okay.
Just a que, I just remembered, that was the other one, because I had to move them to the.
Because that's a grant, if we determine we're not gonna do it, it's, doesn't come in, doesn't go out, so.
Right.
Okay.
All right. And I would just say there may be a, a few minor changes as personnel changes come in.
Sure.
You know, if I get an insurance change, we'll do that, try to give us accurate response.
Okay, well, with transitions and turnover.
Yeah, high new hires.
We'll get, we'll be close.
That's just not gonna be any.
And I guess the other question on the employment thing that came up, if we go through with this final budget, and then if that is approved next week, you will work with the department heads and elected officials to get the employment information out that they need to have, and they need to get it back to you ASAP.
Yeah, Bobby's already got all the worksheets ready to go.
Okay.
And we'll work. Paulie and I, if Bobby could work all three of us.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, yes.
Are, are we doing the elected, I mean, our carbon heads today, or are you gonna have a lot?
We said we could wait till next Tuesday.
They're saying to wait till next week, okay. The only one, and I forgot about it, but, you know, youth services.
Right.
We need to make sure we throw them in.
Right, yes, and, and we have that open position, but we have, we approved the advertising today, and Mr. Spork could be in on the interviewing part to help us out, but I don't know if we've seen and or heard from anybody yet. Youth services? Any apps or anything, any calls?
No.
Inquiries? Okay, yeah, so nobody's talked about it. Okay, so we'll have to see what happens there, but it will stay in the budget. Okay? Okay. So we'll do an executive session next Tuesday. For personnel. Okay. Anything else?
Second.
The moved and seconded to adjourn. Further discussion? All those in there?
Bye.
Thank you.